Like to call for order, April 25th, 2022, Palatine County Board of Supervisors meeting. If Mr. Cox could lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Ms. Carmack will do the indication.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Heavenly Father, please bless this day and bless the people as we do the work for Palatine County. Amen.
Have any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentations? I'll tell you, Mr. Cox made a request to remove the consent agenda items, so we're going to move those per his request to number nine. It'll be new business, will be A and B, and that will be the minutes when we get to new business, we'll discuss that. Need a motion for a formal approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. County Administrator updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, tonight we have proclamation for Palatine Economic Development Week 2022, and I'll ask Brett Shardine, our Director of Community Development and Deputy County Administrator, to come up. Brett? Whereas the International Economic Development Council is celebrating economic development and has proclaimed May 9th to May 13th as National Economic Development Week, and whereas economic development is a set of programs and policies that aid in the creation, retention, and expansion of jobs, the development of a stable tax base, and enhancement of wealth, and whereas Palatine is committed to fostering a business-friendly climate that will attract employers, enable the county to remain competitive, and generate new jobs for our citizens. And whereas members of the Palatine County Economic Development Department and Economic Development Authority are dedicated to serving the needs of the business community through services such as business and job retention efforts, site location assistance, international business development, new business development, business financing, infrastructure development, and workforce development. And whereas economic development organizations serve as a resource center committed to delivering local, state, and federal resources that will enhance the competitiveness of their regions and contribute to the county's economic growth and vitality. And whereas all Palatine citizens benefit from a strong and prosperous economy. Now therefore, we, the members of Palatine County Board of Supervisors, do hereby recognize May 9th to 13th, 2022, as Palatine Economic Development Week in the county of Palatine, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Adopted by the County Board of Supervisors on April 25th, 2022, attest Ned Smith, a clerk, and Mike Riley, chairman. Mr. Shardine?
Thank you, County Administrator, Board of Supervisors, and thanks for your dedication and focus to economic development. Got phenomenal business community, so it's always the best part of my job when I get to work with some of the existing businesses, and Roxanne and Carla help us out with that as well, and they do a fantastic job representing the county and helping grow our local economy. Thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
Now I'll pass the baton to Mr. Shardine. I'm the second proclamation, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Shardine?
Yep. So tonight I'll present a proclamation recognizing National Telecommunicators Week and the telecommunicators of the Palatine County Public Safety Communications 911 Center. Tom Nolan, our Director of Public Safety Communication heads up that effort. There he is, some of them with him tonight, so I'll read this and then we'll present it to Mr. Nolan and his staff. But whereas, since the first 911 call was made 54 years ago, we have all come to understand that calling this number will provide us with immediate help at any time, day or night, across our country. And whereas, the prompt response of the sheriff deputies, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our sheriff's deputies, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Palatine County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, the public safety communication officers with Palatine County's Public Safety Department are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are the single vital link for our deputies, firefighters, and emergency services personnel through monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, each public safety communications officer has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Palatine County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize April 10th through 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and joins in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Board. Just want to say we have a great team here. We're dedicated professionals, give so much, off-duty, on-duty, all the time. And we have a great team with the firefighters and sheriff's office, and we really appreciate your effort supporting us. Thank you.
How many do you have with you tonight?
Oh, we have Kim Schmidt and David Samuels. They're both been here for a long time for us and doing a great job.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Next up, Firefly broadband update.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have with us tonight with Firefly, Mr. Gary Wood and team. Mr. Wood, always glad to hear your updates. Thanks for coming and joining us tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, and I was a little confused because I stepped out of the car and I was putting my jacket on and I heard a round of applause start out, and I thought, we really haven't done that much. And then I realized somebody just scored down on the baseball field, and it wasn't for me, but we have Dennis Reese, our general manager, is here with me tonight, and let's see, is it just you and I, Dennis? Okay, there may be a couple other folks online. Let me give you a quick reminder of what the project is and an update on where we are with it. Okay. Um, so this is our overall RISE project, covers parts of 13 counties, but we want to talk tonight about the next one, which is Palatine County. This is the RISE project, which includes for us both that big body project and a USDA reconnect project. Where the financial comes from, less important for the citizens of Palatine, more important is knowing who's going to get connected to the network. So both of those are shown on this map. And on our website now, we have a map for each county. So if any Palatine citizen wants to see if they are in the covered area, they can actually go to our website, select Palatine County map, and see this map. And then real quickly, a reminder of the figures for the body project. In total, we're looking at a $15 million project. $4 million comes from Body, the county contribution's $3 million. That will pass 2,000, a little over 2,000 homes and have 185 miles of fiber. In addition, the USDA reconnect has about another 600 homes and about another 70 miles of fiber. So all total, you're looking at 2,600 homes and 250 miles of fiber. And let me give you a quick update on where those are. I think, yeah, we'll get into this in just a minute. But the reconnect project was announced last August from USDA. We thought, this is our second reconnect grant, and we thought that things would move along a little quicker. We had reason to believe it would. We anticipated signing the final documents for that in December or January. And we asked several times last fall if we need to do anything else to make sure that that kept moving. There had been an environmental review that the Department of Historic Resources had asked us to consider doing way back in March of 2020 when we first applied. So when they announced the award, we asked USDA, do we need to do this environmental review? Because it's going to take us two to four weeks and we can get it underway. And they assured us in October, we didn't need to do it. November, they told us again. December, they told us again. At the end of January, after several delays, they said, okay, we're ready to sign things within the next week or two. And they called the next week and said, you've got to do an environmental review of historic sites. So we started that up, and that was completed last week and has been submitted. I am hopeful that that will get turned around pretty quickly and at least the reconnect piece of this should take off. We should have already realistically had that, and our plans were to have that underway at the start of the year. So that's been delayed, but we're close to start. The Body project was announced in December. They started what they call their contract negotiations on the 12th of January with us. They give us a 90-day window to work within and get everything filed and get the final contract in place. They sent us the contract the week before the deadline, the first week of April, they sent it to us. So we have asked for an extension for that because there are a couple of things that we need to negotiate with the state. And I'll be glad to talk details if you want to about a few of them, but we're in active negotiation to hopefully we'll get that wrapped up, get things signed in May to fully get that project underway. In the meantime, we did ask in January, can we get approval to start doing some work? And they authorized us to take on what they call a soft cost, which is some material procurement. We can start doing planning and engineering. We've started some of that work. The same way on the USDA reconnect project, we have asked, can we order the communications hut and a couple of the long lead items? And they've given us that authorization. Those are ordered and underway. So we've started work. You haven't seen us in the field yet. Hopefully you'll see us in the field very soon on both of those projects as we start up. We'll be able to give more accurate timelines as we get those final contracts in place, both with USDA and with Body. We've really agreed to everything on USDA as far as the paperwork. Right now, it's just, in fact, we've signed it, gotten state approvals that we needed. Everything's there except for the environmental piece. On the Body piece, we've got one or two last items to get negotiated in the contract, and we'll have that up and running hopefully soon. So that's where we stand with that. Generally, when we start, it takes about six months from start of construction to home connections. There's one piece of this that will not be a factor in Palatine, and that's the make-ready engineering and make-ready construction that's up there. So this is a typical build-out. We have a contractor called NTS who comes around and does field data gathering. When that starts, we send notices out to all the people in the area that you'll can anticipate sending an NTS truck with a side sign, a magnetic sign that says they're a Firefly contractor. And that's the first work we do in the field. After that, we do design work. We'll have some of the Connectson folks, who is a design firm, also in the field doing checks of that design to make sure they know where they're putting the handholds and vaults and pedestals. And again, we tell the potential subscribers in there what to expect, what the truck looks like, how it's labeled. Then, since it's not overhead, we don't have make-ready engineering and construction on the majority of this in Palatine. So we would start fiber construction that CSN is starting to do boring and plowing and putting in things on the roadside because it's going to be 95% underground in Palatine. The piece that's not underground is the Dominion piece. There's a little Dominion piece using their middle mile program. That piece, they'll have a little make-ready engineering and construction overhead, but it's a fairly small number in Palatine who are served by that. We have started work with Dominion to identify the holes that we'll want connections on and the things that they need to do for their engineering on that, but that's probably going to be a year, 18 months away to get to the Dominion piece. And that'll serve the little portions to the east side of this map and going down and touching some of those kind of islands that are hanging out there a little bit. So that's where the project stands. That's just a reminder that we still have the same plan as far as pricing. It's the same prices that we have for the members of CVC where this project started. They're very competitive. We do plan to go up to 2,500 feet for service drops, service extensions without charge as part of the Body project and reconnect. So we think that's going to cover the vast majority of folks. If there's someone who's low and moderate income and has a longer service extension, we'll run it as far as they need without cost. If you're not low and moderate income, you're over 2,500 feet, we'll ask you to pay per foot for the and it's about a buck a foot to pay for the underground to get the rest of the way. So that's where we stand. That's where our project is. Here are some places where you can go online and find the construction updates and see those maps. And we'll make sure we catch up with the county and give you information so you can have it on your website if you want, that links back, as well as sharing it with all of the supervisors. So that's where we stand tonight, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Two questions. I believe probably Mr. Cox and I get the most phone calls on this. If we could give our constituents the answer to two questions, I think they would be very happy. Where are you starting? I mean, are you starting up near Cumberland, near Goochland, you know, off of 13?
Right. So if, I have to keep saying if because I'm waiting for that reconnect grant. If the reconnect grant comes through, it's going to run along 60 and go up 522. And we would start building along that path. And that would include some neighborhoods off of 60 that are in that reconnect area. If reconnect is delayed much, then we will probably start coming out of the northwestern part of the county up near Carterville. Because we already have fiber available right across the line in Cumberland, out of the CVC Carterville substation. And that's the easiest extension for us to make if we're going to start before we start the reconnect. So it'll be one of those two. They may start close to each other, but I'm hoping we'll get the reconnect moving and we'll start along Route 60 first.
And you'll find out about that?
We should any day. I will let you know when we know.
Okay.
They really, it was last Thursday or Friday that they, the consultant turned the final report in. And the final report found that there were no locations where we had to do any significant additional work, design-wise. We have a couple places where I have to just move to the other side of the road, but that means there shouldn't be any delays in the review at the state level, and they should be able to turn it around pretty quick.
So if we tell our citizens that they should be seeing physical work within six months, that would be reasonable?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep, we'll be, yeah, fast in six months.
Faster than six, faster than six months?
I'll give you a firmer date as soon as I get these contracts signed. I just need some ink on the contract.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. When we go to your website?
Yes.
And we pull up the map, they can drill down on that because it's expandable so that you can really look and see where?
Okay, we don't have that map up yet, right, Dennis? So this, this has about this level of detail. The one that's going to show the individual locations, the crowd fiber piece, I'm talking about some software that you don't need to know about. Okay, so that'll probably be another. Yeah, so we'll let you know when, when we have the one that has the every specific address on it. And then they'll be able to go in and put in their address and see exactly what?
The only, the only people that care are those that are on the edges.
That's, that's right. I understand.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
And let me just say, our commitment is to make sure everybody who is unserved gets served. So if they are on the edge and somehow we missed them, and this just came up. There's a location in Albemarle County that showed as having fiber available, so we excluded it. And I've now heard three times from the gentleman, and the county has assured me that there's no service really there. We'll make sure and include those areas because they're not served. I just need to make sure I'm not using grant funds to overbuild if there's another service available. All right.
All right. And the name of that website, Mr. Wood? Fireflyva.com.
Yes.
And when you see an NTS truck, something good's getting ready to happen.
That is correct. You will, when you, yes, yes. When, at the county level, you will know when we apply for the permit for the hut. That's a good sign. That, that means everything's approved, and now we need to get a building permit to get built. So you'll see that come through, I'm sure, as part of a, I'm not sure what your process is here, but typically we have to get a, sometimes a special use permit depending on what's allowed in the areas. All right. Very good.
Thank you very much. Okay. That'll bring us to our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to come down and address the board now would be the time. You have three minutes to speak as an individual. If you're representing a group, you have up to five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Carl Schundeman from 1727 Teresa Lane. I want to ask if Palatine County can make sure they apply for either a TAP grant or a Transportation Alternatives grant to extend the village side, to extend the village sidewalks east in the direction around 60 or, or to the post or west towards the post office, or get some, or get the Shags Road sidewalk project funded. Because I was looking at the transportation projects on the county list, and I didn't really find any, seen any information on it. But I also found out that there's a new sidewalk pedestrian funding program called the Saved Streets for Users, which is like a new program, part of the infrastructure bill, which is a $6.2 billion program that can be used to fund extending the village sidewalks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Come right on up.
My name is Sally Taylor. I'm a landowner here in Palatine County. And I'm not, I'm here tonight for two new AFDs that will be presented to the Board of Supervisors for approval. But I noticed tonight the Economic Development Board, and Economic Development Week did not include, at least I didn't hear it. I didn't hear what he said very well. They did not include agriculture and timber. Those are very important parts of the county's economic development, and I just wanted to be we're working very hard to encourage these agricultural and forestal district developments, which will help keep these very important economies in the county. So I wanted to do that to be part of our economic development plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Keith Burgess, 1491 Giles Bridge Road. I'm here representing Palatine Farm Bureau tonight. Max couldn't be with us. Timberlake couldn't be with us tonight. So he's asked me as our Secretary and Treasurer to represent our organization. Palatine Farm Bureau continues to support our Commissioner of Revenue and the respective duties of the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. Our Commissioner and Office have done an excellent job for more than a decade of fairly and equitably administering assessments, taxes, assisting citizens, landowners, business owners with meeting their tax obligations. There are many regulations related to the administration and application of the county tax programs, which include tax relief programs. The Commissioner and staff have received multiple trainings and achieved statewide certifications to be efficient, proficient, and equitable as defined by the codes. The duties of the Commissioner are not rocket science, as I was speaking with Jamie yesterday, but do require local knowledge of the county, community, and its citizens. Jamie Timberlake and his staff have that knowledge. I've known Jamie. In fact, I was on the interview panel that hired Jamie when he first started working for the county, probably about 25 years ago. We hired him because of his work ethics, his dedication to improve our community. And this is what Farm Bureau is concerned about, the future of Palatine County. Many of our citizens and Farm Bureau members have received assistance in understanding personal property taxes, general tax assessments, land use valuation programs, and agricultural forestal districts. We all know assessments are based on property values. There are no fancy complicated algorithms to determine property values as some would believe. Values are not determined by the color of your house, nor the precise location, but in generalities. These formulas are predetermined prior to any assessment, so there's no subjectivity of the assessor determining the value. It's not whether or not I like you, it's where is your house, what is this, what is the true market value of this piece of property? I first realized this when I questioned my tax assessment about 20 years ago. So Farm Bureau believes our current Commissioner and staff have a proven record of being fair and equitable and consistent with the law in making assessments. We believe the Commissioner's office and staff can handle annual assessments. Therefore, Palatine Farm Bureau strongly encourages returning the assessment process and associated programs back to the Commissioner of Revenue. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Davis, 1433 Palmer Road. And how you do, Mr. the Board, or Chairman and Board, good to talk to you this evening. I'm in, I work here, or I don't work here, I work for Goochland County, and I am also an assessor there. I've been in the assessment field for 40 years, and I also understand all the little nuances that you have to go through, that you deal with in the assessor's office. And in all respect to Keith Farm Bureau, that's great, and that's good for the farming community. But you also have to realize that you're dealing also with growth that's coming to your area, the bedroom communities that we, I've heard you all talked about. You're also dealing with Walmart that's here, and if you haven't read any of the documentation of what they're doing to other localities, not only just in Virginia, but across, and they're taking it all the way across everywhere, trying to defend having the vanilla boxes where it's empty, they want you to value it based on if it's empty. And so there are all kinds, and it's coming, and in Walmart comes, so comes other boxes of big box commercial properties. And as I deal with commercial, I deal with West Creek, I deal with all the tax reps that comes in over there because I am the commercial appraiser for there, and you better have, you better have your I's, dots, and your T's crossed. So the thing I want to say is it's important that the county works together, be it it's under the Commissioner or under the county administrator. I would prefer to see it under the county administrator because the fact of it is the less, the further away you have of influence, of bias that appears sometimes, you don't want that ever come up. And it's not like I'm bringing it up to be a soothsayer, but I just know this. I am dealing now with a Board of Equalization case that is a previous assessor that was fired in the jurisdiction. And so I am dealing with a lot of different issues, and so you better have, it's good to know you know your community, but you also better know your commercial. but you also better know your commercial community as well. Um, I just want to say this, one year ago, you all passed the resolution, I believe, all of you all voted to have a reassessment uh, in-house under the county administrator. You haven't given any consideration of the fact that the software changes or the time it takes to set up hiring. So I will say this tonight, that I hope you take a time to re, you know, if you're reviewing this, that you take all those other things under consideration when you, when you're thinking about doing any changes because it's not been timed enough. And I will welcome you. I have plenty of documentation of the history of what happened in Gushland and how it happened and when it happened. So it helps you all to guide your next step in the assessment field. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. Kitty Osborne, one oh seven one Dorset Road, Powhatan, Virginia. Hope everybody's well. I just have two comments. You know, I keep hearing about the economic development here in Powhatan County. You know, I've got to put a plug in for us small beef farmers. Collectively, all the small beef farmers in the United States grow more beef than the mega farmers. And of course, I just went through the pain and misery of building a barn for some of my beef cattle. And it took me, good luck though, Mr. Firefly with Dominion. It took me three months and three days to get electricity to my barn. But in dealing with various people in the county and even Lee Ware, and, uh, you know, we're patting ourselves on the back here for being economic developers, but basically I was told, well, don't rock the boat, Kitty. You don't want to make anybody mad. Well, you know, I wore a uniform for forty years where I went to work to do a great job. I didn't worry about making people mad. I worried about doing a good job. But anyway, it was a little disheartening to just be told, be patient, don't worry. Don't make anybody mad, or they'll never come and connect your electricity. Gee, I, you know, whatever. Then my second comment is on, uh, property assessments. It needs to be under our Commissioner of Revenue. I appreciate that you all are rethinking this and that you're revisiting it, but the people in Powhatan don't trust folk from outside the county, and we like to keep our business inside the county, and we want our Commissioner of Revenue to be that person. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Huff, twenty fifteen West Street Court, District Two, um, resident in Powhatan County for fifty years. I have to say that I'm pretty disappointed in the direction this county's headed, uh, the incompetence is running rampant. I was at a meeting with, uh, I believe it was February when Mr. Cox, uh, we knew that there was a problem with the real estate assessments, uh, tax bills going out because the paperwork was done wrong. Mr. Cox made suggestion, hey, let's set this off another month and sit down and talk about it. Got voted down. The concern for the residents here is, is lackluster, if anything. Mr. Williams summed it up, I think, a little over a month ago, when he stood here and says, this, this county's corrupt. Y'all take no responsibility for anything. And it's, you know, it, it really is sad. Like I said, I moved here in June of nineteen seventy-two. I was seven years old, so. I've seen a lot of changes in this county and, uh, the way it's headed now. It's disheartening. It really is. You know, I, I see here on a post, uh, the fire truck that was put on here by one of the local volunteers. Two thousand international, forty-two thousand miles. He's ranting and raving about how well it's been maintained. Why did we get rid of it? Is there a certain federal law, state law that you have to change fire equipment out? I'd love to have him run a new F three fifty, but I'm a fiscal person. I would take responsibility. I can't afford it right now, especially with the taxes here. Y'all are taxing us to death. Yeah, y'all say you give us a, a downgrade on it, but yet the assessments go through the roof. So you need to, uh, sit back, and if you're going to run as a fiscal conservative, act like a fiscal conservative. Don't, don't walk the walk if you can't talk, talk, okay? And another thing, when I make a post on here and someone's child comes after me and just starts trying to belittle me, that's very unprofessional. You might want to tell your child not to do that anymore.
Good evening. David Barron, thirty-four ninety-two Richards Run, Powhatan, Virginia, District Three, two, three, one, three, nine. I have to agree with Mr. Huff. Pretty much everything he said. It's very disheartening to watch what's going on in this county. Now we're talking about maybe correcting a problem, as Mr. McCrone said, voted five oh last time. He wasn't here. He's got a chance to correct that problem tonight. Like I said last year, it's a whole lot easier to get rid of one person. Commissioner revenue ain't doing his job. He gets voted out four years from now. Instead, now, we have to have three Board of Supervising members get flipped to get the county administrator not to be screwing this thing up. Well, I shouldn't say he's screwing up. It's, it's a screwed up mess right now. Everybody knows that. To go ahead and hire somebody that's not qualified, we got to pay somebody to teach them how to do the job. We're fortunate enough that y'all correct your mistake and change this thing and give it back to Commissioner Revenue. What's going to happen with that position? Is that just something the county is going to absorb more money falling from heaven like manna down to the ground? Let's get to the point, y'all must be getting strong. You turn around and shaking us, and it's falling out of our pockets. It's absolute, it's, you know, it's just pathetic. Far as talking about giving, you know, watching out for the big box stores coming, well, I think Walmart's been here fifteen years. I don't think we're going to get overrun by that. We're not like Gushland. We don't have an interstate running through the middle of us. And economic development? Only thing I hear about economic development, I went to a meeting that was dedicated to that, was, uh, excuse my expression, a snake oil salesman self trying to sell snake oil to get us into real estate development business. We're going to run up down sixty, and some people sit up and smirk right now. I really don't care. Run up down sixty and buy property. It's been sitting there for ten to fifteen years. Nobody wants to buy. So please don't throw away our money. And then you, you know, please thank for y'all do these things. It is just unbelievable. People are getting sick and tired of it. And I have to agree with that woman made a comment, not, not so much Dominion power. Uh, if Firefly's got to stand in line to get a permit done, like most people trying to get a housing, a whole thing like that done, it'd be five years before you ever see any expansion of the, uh, cable, whatever you want to call it. And one other thing, talking about economic development, I think that week is May ninth through the fourteenth or fifteenth, I think it is. Maybe I can get an answer from the county administrator on temporary permit I put in by then. I sent an email, March twenty-ninth, in relation to that last week, and asked for the three days good answer. Still haven't got one. Maybe I can get one by the Economic Development Week. Thank you very much.
Judy Kane Oliver, forty-three seventy-two, Three Bridge Road. On a very different note, I'm here speaking about senior services again on behalf of the Senior Action Committee. First, let me say to you that I am listening to you all. I am listening either here or virtually to your comments, your questions, and your concerns, and I really do appreciate it. And even more so, I appreciate that you are listening to me. I am very excited about the senior focus that I hear going on in this community. I am also thankful and excited about the money that is in the CIP. I do appreciate the conversations that I've been able to have with board members that I have spoken with and those that I have scheduled time to speak with in, in the near future. For those that I've not spoken with, I am also hopeful that we can schedule a time in the very near future. As far as the study is going to be conducted between, uh, senior connections and the, the VCU gerontology department, I think that that is exciting and could bring some good information to the community. I am very open, however, to speaking with the study coordinators. I want to, I think it's very important that the unique, uh, issues related to the baby boomer, baby boomer generation be reflected in that study. Those folks are not often reflected in our current, uh, or involved with, with agencies that we have ongoing. I look forward to the continued opportunities to speak to the board, we, we requesting provision of comprehensive services, uh, involving collaboration of senior connections, social services, churches, and community groups. My belief is that seniors have a great deal to offer this community as to, well, as to benefit from this community. And then finally, in, in the meantime, what I would ask is that the board give some consideration to either a dedicated website or, as some communities have done, either a program guide or a directory that we could begin to pull together the communication, um, so that seniors know where is the Alzheimer's group that's ongoing? Where can I find that? Who do I contact? The caregiver commu, uh, group that's in the community, where is that? What time, what day? The Friendship Cafe, is it open? All of those things are, uh, it, it's just very timely to, to be able to access that communication. And I think there's some few easy steps that we could take to, um, to benefit us all. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Fran Carlton. I live at two-two-one-nine Rossen Road. Going to share an observation with you. I think at this time, the county has been less transparent in how it governs than any other time that I can recall. From this assessment process to the incorrect tax, a set, a tax process. The new tax assessment was not given enough review and thought before we started this. I do not think departments are asking for help from other departments that have been serving Powhatan for years. It seems like it's an attitude of my way or the highway. There's no room for input. I hope as a county that we can do better, that we'll communicate, find a solution. But first you have to ask for help. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chairman. My name's Eric Maybach. I am Clark County Commissioner of Revenue, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my support for you guys moving the real estate reassessments under the Constitution Officer Commissioner of Revenue Jamie Timberlake. The reason why I speak to this is I was newly elected in twenty nineteen. I took office in twenty twenty. My board, uh, shortly thereafter in twenty twenty-one, moved reassessment into my office. The reason why they chose to do this, with my understanding, was the amount of accountability it gives to all of our residents. And I say all of our residents because all of us are elected officials, all of us that are on the board are in the commissioners. County administrators are not elected, people that work for them. It's only an added layer of bureaucracy that keeps our residents from having someone that is directly accountable to them for whether or not it's done correctly, whether it's done well, and whether it's done efficiently. The other thing I think that it really steps and speaks up to is the fact that when you have your chief assessor in charge of the real estate assessments, you have what are essential part of our government, separation of powers. You have one elected body that's set to, uh, come up with the assessment values. You have your treasurer that is set and ready to collect on the tax rate, which you guys set. So there is a balance of powers that is tried and true in our entire country, and it's how it's supposed to work. It's how it's supposed to work for our residents. That is one of my biggest pushes when I ran, was to do right by my residents and do right for the people I serve. That doesn't mean do favors. There's been times that you have to tell people, I'm sorry, this is fair market value. Your assessment is going to go up. But they have that touch. They have that transparency where they know they can come talk to me, and I can sit down and give them a personal view and an understanding why and show the empathy that's needed because as a resident of the county I represent, I also feel those same burdens. Thank you for the time to speak, and I really hope you consider moving it back under Jamie Timberlake. He would serve you well. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else. Mr. Smith, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Scott Mayoski is online. Mr. Mayoski, if you don't mind, uh, go, go right ahead. You're on mute. If you don't mind taking yourself off mute. Thank you.
Good evening. I hope that you can hear me. Uh, my name's Scott Mayoski, and I'm Commissioner of the Revenue for Stafford County, Virginia. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to address the issue regarding the real estate assessments and the necessity to return those assessments to the Office of the Commissioner of the Revenue under the direction of Jamie Timberlake. I first want to apologize for not being there in person. It was my intention. I was driving south and I ninety-five did not cooperate. You know, traffic's so bad in Fredericksburg, we have a saying that when you're driving in Fredericksburg, you're still thirty minutes away from Fredericksburg. So I do apologize. Just some background is why I feel the necessity to speak to you tonight. I've been Commissioner Revenue for twenty-two years. I oversee a biennial budget with a total assessed value of twenty-eight billion dollars in one of the fastest growing localities in Virginia. In twenty twelve, I was appointed to the Real Estate Appraiser Board by Governor Bob McDonnell. Excuse me. I've taught real property tax assessment throughout Virginia and even master classes through the World Bank. When I talk to students about the importance of property taxes, I explain that a property tax system is like a three-legged stool. You have policy, you have technology, but the most important leg of that stool is trust. If you don't have trust, you can have great policies and great technology, but the system will fail. Jamie Timberlake has earned the trust of the, of the voters and the taxpayers in Powhatan. They have elected him and they have reelected him to public office multiple times. I'm confident that with Jamie's knowledge, integrity, and leadership skills, he will develop a staff that will possess a deep knowledge of Powhatan's real estate market, a rapport with taxpayers, and he'll develop that staff with a professionalism that will be unmatched. All of these skills will build a level of trust with your constituents that will serve Powhatan well. Commissioner Timberlake will also be able to leverage his existing staff to reduce redundancies and maximize resources. Appraisers can work more closely with those who read deeds, which will allow them to better verify sales and ensure that assessments are at market value. Jamie is a leader within the com, the Commissioner of the Revenues Association. I've watched his personal leadership skills grow over the years. I can assure you that your property tax system and your taxpayers will be in good hands if you return this vital function to Commissioner Timberlake. I know Jamie and I trust Jamie. Thank you for your time.
Chairman Zoom is clear. Right? Excuse me, one sec. Yes, it's clear. Okay, not seeing anyone else, no one on Zoom. We'll close the public comment period. Now we will move to new business, A, March seventh, twenty twenty-two budget workshop minutes. Mr. Cox?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if you could turn to page eight in your packet. Up at the top. Up at the top, under Public Comments, you have Richard Ayers, Monaco Water Transportation. That should be Monican Soil and Water Conservation District. If you would turn to page nine. The third paragraph on page nine starts off Mr. Smith. So Mr. Smith continued with his overview presenting the regional property tax rates. He stated that both Enrico and Chesterfield had now had announced a 2% increase. It's a two cent, cent as in penny decrease.
Mr. Chairman, those are those are the two concerns I had. Okay, as far as
Those minutes.
On those minutes, yes.
We're going to go to March 28 now?
Yes, I've I've resolved the problems I had there. I got enough. I finally had the time to get the research done and I'm happy with the way they're written.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Right along, old business.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to adopt those minutes with the changes requested by Mr. Cox?
Yes, we can do that. You want to make that motion, Bill?
Yes, I'd like, I move that we adopt the two meetings as presented with the two changes in the March 7, 2022 that I outlined.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Old Business, Transportation Project Prioritization requested by Ms. Carmack.
Good evening again, Board members. So the recent workshop, we talked through some of our various transportation projects from different studies and plans and prioritizing some of those. And there was an interest in at that time, we were looking at which ones to apply for smart scale. We've made those applications. So we'll continue to work on that and update you as we find out how those are going with VDOT. But at that workshop, there is some interest in also using some of our local CVTA funds to start some projects sooner. As you know, smart scale applications are every two years, and if we do get a project awarded, it can take usually around five years for that state funding to come on board and begin the project. But now we have some of these CVTA funds that we have much more flexibility, essential total flexibility in what we can spend them on locally. So we have the opportunity to both use them to leverage applications and get state matched dollars later, but also do some transportation projects right away and get some things going. So we looked at and created the model of our forecasting essentially the next 10 years of expected CVTA revenue to the county. And then how we can do projects, both fully funding, doing them locally now, as well as leveraging state funds for the future. So I appreciate any feedback on these. But the most important thing would be the FY23 projects. Those would be the ones that we could start on soon. Ones in the future, we would have to come to you each year and look because as we do or don't get smart scale projects, those will shift in the order as we get updated estimates and things from VDOT, as well as we go after funding through other programs like TAP, as Mr. Schwanman mentioned, or RSTP. Again, if we're successful, another avenues will move this model around. So the only one with most urgency would be FY23. So to just briefly talk through what we're proposing here to start initially would be the Holly Hills Turn Lane. We discussed that one, I think, several times in the past. Trend Home and Route 60 intersection, that one came from the Route 60 corridor preservation study. And we've unfortunately had some fatalities there in recent years. So one certainly worth looking at. The South Creek Route 60 through cut. So that one also came from the Route 60 corridor preservation study. As far as these things go, that's about the most affordable project we have. That would be restriping, changing some of the calibration of the stoplights, but no real construction there. Free Bridge and 711 Turn Lane, that one came from the recent 711 safety corridor study. And then the Route 1360 and Academy are cut. That one was a VDOT study from several years ago. That one, as you know, we have applied for smart scale. So that one, we'll have to continue to monitor that and see if we can get it through smart scale. As you know, that's a highly competitive process. There's no guarantees. I know this one's a safety issue. It's one we've looked at a couple of times. We've applied in the past, unfortunately unsuccessfully through smart scale. So if we want to kind of take our destiny in our own hands and not rely upon future state programs, this would be a way to look at how we could fund it now. But again, we'll keep an eye on that once it progresses and see if we believe it will be successful through smart scale or not. If it is, then in that case, we could decide, do we want to use the smart scale funds? Going to take a little longer to do it? Or do we want to use our own funds and do it now? But we would have that option at that time. So those are the only ones really, again, immediately before you. The rest of them are just kind of to prioritize, line things up so that we can work through some of these in a more methodical fashion. So happy to answer any questions. Take your feedback.
Any comments, Board members?
Mr. Chairman? I would like to make a motion that we approve the FY23 projects that are laid out here. We've discussed them. They're all projects that are worthy. We have the money. The CVTA funds, and I think it's let's take a vote and get moving.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question before we go with the vote, if I may.
Can we get a simple get a second on her motion?
Second.
Okay, now, Mrs. Williams, go ahead.
Okay, I have a series of questions. Brett? Down here where you've got 711 corridor wide line. Is that from the 2006 711 corridor study?
I think that's where it originated, and it was referenced again in the recent 711 safety audit as well. They have mentioned in there of it.
We're not showing that we're paying any money to that.
Correct. Yeah, I think that one, just because of the large dollar figure for it and the fact that we have a number of other improvements recommended in that study that we could do quicker and more affordably. So it's something to look at for the future, but it's a big, big price tag on that one.
Okay, seeing another one here, Page Road improvements. What is that?
Yep. So that one, we put it out in the future because, you know, as you and I spoke about today. You know, I think we all agree that intersection needs something, you know, in the future, but what that is not decided yet. You know, we have our cut proposed as part of, you know, kind of came up as part of the development case. Before that, at one time, VDOT had been looking to signalize intersection. So I think one day we will want to do some kind of improvement there, but we need to look at that, study that and see is our cut the right solution? Is there, is there something else we want to do there? So that's kind of a placeholder, putting it out in future years. In the meantime, we'll study it and you know, have a more accurate price once we decide what we're actually going to do. So it's just a placeholder. We didn't want to ignore it. And then when we do decide we want to do something one day, now we have to figure out how to fit, you know, a couple million back into our model. So that's thought process.
So it's just for the intersection?
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Now, these other projects where we're putting money in addition to applying for smart scale, and we've had this discussion before. There's going to be a period of time before we know whether or not, you know, they're going to be awarded. And then let's just say that short period of time, what is it, a year?
Yeah.
Okay. And then if it doesn't score out, we don't get it. What happens to that money that we're saying we're going to obligate to the 25% match?
Yep. So then we would, in this model, look at how we could reallocate that. So in
So this, where I'm going with this. So this spreadsheet is going to be constantly changing.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And you're going to be giving us updates as we get information about the funding of projects and whether or not, you know, they're successful and their applications for the other pots of money.
Yep, exactly. That's exactly right. And we, the model's kind of, I don't know if you'd call it worst or best case scenario, but we're plugging in that we're going to get every single smart scale project, which means we're allocating our matching funds for every single project. Now we know we're not going to get four awards in one year from them. So as we find out which projects we do or don't get, then that'll free up those funds to, you know, do some projects sooner, hopefully. So this, this will evolve as we find out about those smart scale awards. But yeah, right now, we're, as a placeholder, allocating each one of those matching funds.
Okay, so some of these projects will also be eligible for the Regional Surface Transportation Block Funding.
Yeah, correct.
The original Regional Transportation Planning Organization. Is that correct?
That's right. Yeah, so we've
Putting any money leveraging any of those applications.
No.
They're due every October and we do them manually.
Yep. So that's, you know, assuming we go after the same projects as smart scale, and since they use similar, similar scoring, you know, that's logical. We could take the matches that we've proposed here and then pursue it through smart, through RSTP. Or if we want to propose a new project in that, then we would need to adjust the model. But yeah, we'll definitely be pursuing them through that as well.
Well, smart scale projects are every two years, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, they cut off this year, I believe, is we got pre-application March and cut off this one August?
August 1, I believe.
Okay. And then we have annual and annual, the Regional Surface Transportation Block, right?
That's right.
Okay. So in that two-year period, we could have two RSTBG applications where we could be doubling down on the money. In other words, you may want to go ahead and put money, say you're going to match on a smart scale project, and at the same time, put money down on RSTBG application as well. Is that reflected in this spreadsheet?
That's not yet. So that's one thing we will update as we decide what projects we're going to, you know, pursue through RSTP.
Because you would have, you know, essentially, it's going to decrement the amount that you're showing right now.
Yeah.
That we have.
Correct, yeah. So if there's, if there's projects, you know, as we get closer to that and decide that we want to pursue them through that, then we could adjust them.
I hope we're going to pursue every year, just like we did this past year. We're not going to miss that opportunity annually for those projects.
Now, especially now.
Reason why we would. Can you?
No, no, we should and we will.
Okay. So if you'll do that for us, I mean, I'm okay with what you've done with that one correction. I won't, I won't be able to reflect those monies as well as the smart scale match. Because again, everything today is about leverage. We had that conversation, CVTA and TPO, it's about leveraging across, you know, your CVTA, it's leveraging across your RSTBG and smart scale and the combination of the three. So they're always moving. So you got your work done, don't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty dynamic experience.
It's a good problem to have. We're going to get some stuff done that we've never been able to before.
Where you've never had, where you've had money, we could put with projects.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, with those recommended changes. Mr. Chairman, I'm through.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Short, I'm, your graph spreadsheet. At the top, it has smart scale PICO percentage 25%. I thought it was 30%. And it's referred 30% back in our transportation plan. I'm just looking for the right number.
Yeah, the, and I think we had talked at different times about different numbers. We looked historically, kind of what's an average that's worked for applications across the state of one. I think we saw kind of 20% was an average. But now with the CVTA funds, I think it'll be more competitive than ever. So we thought, let's pump that up just a little bit to 25%. So I think we talked about 30 at one time, but my recollection from our last workshop was we arrived at 25%. And, you know, for a particular project, we could decide we wanted a little more, a little less, but for a starting point, for a planning point, we would use 25 as our number.
The reason I ask is because in the transportation plan, page 105 on your, in your packet, it says smart scale available approximately 30% is the district grant, the DGP. And that's, that's why I'm confused. You know, is it 30 or 20? I don't know what the right number should be, but shouldn't those numbers be the same? Page 105, Brett?
Let's see.
Which says smart scale.
So that is, and that's confusing. This was something provided by VDOT. So of the total smart scale monies allocated across the state or across the district, 30% of them go to the district grant program, which is the one that we access, and then other ones go to things like rail, public transportation, things like that. So no, that's just saying of the whole billions of dollars the state gives, 30% goes towards projects such as ours.
So the 25% is a good number.
Correct, yeah.
Thanks. That's me. Brett, in looking at the same graph, the Route 1360 Academy Road that I know Mr. Cox and I are both interested. Just so you people know, that is a $3.7 million project. But as you said, we've applied for that in smart scale.
Yeah.
And we're into the year, first quarter of next year before we know an answer on that. Close?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. But if we don't get it, we're going ahead and build it, right? Right.
This will give us a way to do it.
There you go. Okay, so the motion's on the floor. Want to repeat it, Ms. Carmack?
That we go ahead and move forward with the FY23 transportation projects as presented.
Mr. McClung, second. So we need to do a roll call, Mr. Lynch? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five of.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Short. I appreciate your assistance there. Review of the established of establishment of reassessment of office requested by Mr. Cox. You want to lead us there, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let me try my technology here. Can't share my screen with you. All right. Off to good, good morning, good afternoon, everybody. I hope this would help you get a little understanding of where we've come to date. Since July 1, we started the new assessment office. And we hope this will give you a little background on what's happened today, what's going on in the future. desired goals of everybody at the board and at the Commissioner's Office, we're all in agreement, almost. We go back in time, we all agree that annual reassessment is the best option versus biannual reassessment. Board agreed to that, the commissioner agreed to that also. We all agreed that the county year billing versus fiscal year billing was much improved. Board agreed, commissioner agreed. We all agreed that we need to create a new assessment office. Board agreed to that. Commissioner agreed to that. Where we differed was the assessment office would report to the county administrator. The board agreed to that. The commissioner revenue did not agree to that. And that's why we're here to talk about some of the details today. The board did a vote 5-0 to create the assessment office under county administrator back in April 19, 2021, about a year ago. They basically create the office effective January 1, 2022, for that assessment year coming up, ending in December 31 of '22. Give you a little background on what's happened to date. Second half 2021, we started the office, we started in July. We've hired Chief Assessor Charles Evers and an office manager in July. We developed a system to automate land use documentation and recertified 1,285 land use taxpayers. We work closely with our contractor, Wamper Eames, to make sure that a new construction within the county was included in a new reassessment by digitizing permits for easier review. We had preliminary meetings with Keystone Information Systems. That's our new mass appraisal system. Keystone is doing our county-wide ERP system and the mass appraisal system is part of that. We were entered in preliminary meetings of Keystone to bring that system, start bringing that system online. We produce reassessment notices to taxpayers as required by code. It was very much team effort. We borrowed Tommy Boe from finance. Tommy's role in the Keystone implementation is to help all departments, and he was vital in the real estate assessment. And I was heavily involved too, trying to help out where I could, trying to get the office up and running. As we transitioned to 2022, Keystone is still the main priority. How do we convert our old data from Stonewall and our existing Kama system to the new Keystone system? Our assessor resigned. He returned to his previous position as a city of Richmond. We had a variety of successes and failures on chief assessor replacements. Good news, bad news on that. Our first candidate was very talented. She verbally accepted. Then she abruptly changed her mind. A second candidate, a few weeks later, she was very experienced and talented with Powhatan roots. She was very interested, and she was offered the amount she asked for, but she never responded to the offer. Good news is, in February 24, 2022, Donna Prince was offered and accepted a job as chief assessor, bringing a tremendous amount of mass appraisal experience, 16 years of experience to the team. Bringing a tremendous amount of mass appraisal experience, sixteen years of experience to the team. Donna has got certificates and classes and graduated from a lot of different programs. I threw a bunch of them on the screen and I'm only halfway through here. But whether it's the state of Virginia, state of Idaho, you'll see on here, state of Alaska, state, she started in the state of Georgia. When you talk to Donna, you'll hear that Georgia twang, but uh, it's uh, but she's got experience around and, and in multiple states. Significant experience in mass appraisals. A new office. Here's a picture of our team. Let's start with Donna, if you don't mind. Donna is our chief assessor. She shrinks, Donna brings the tables, a significant amount of mass appraisal experience, including camera experience, land use experience and commercial appraisal. She has ability with this experience to train our, our appraisers as we continue to develop that piece of the office. There's things that she hasn't been through, administrative procedures, strategic office procedures that we know will help Donna with. And, and uh, and we, and that particular task, we've got the great help from Mr. Tom Little. Excuse me, while I'm here, if you don't mind, guys on the team, if y'all could all stand up, I, I, it, it, they're all over here sitting here. As I introduce everybody, you'll see uh, the people on the team here. Um, thank you, that's, let everybody know where you're sitting. Uh, Tom comes to us of a tremendous amount of experience managing Virginia assessment offices. He's very experienced of daily procedures, appraisal strategies. How do we best take, take on this task? And especially with technology, Tom is known for leading the industry in technology in, in the assessment area. He will help Donna, especially getting this office up, up and running with staff practices and procedures to make sure we're heading in the right direction. Recently, we hired Mr. Travis Delaney as an appraiser. His strengths are his familiarity with Palitan, his work ethic, his data management skills, his willingness and desire to, to learn mass appraisal business. All top Travis needs is time, training and experience. We've got the team in place to help him shine in that area. Welcome to team Travis. Uh, in addition, we've added Janet Curry to the office. Janet was in, had been in a permit center. She's let, led a Keystone implementation uh, in, in that office, gotten very familiar, great deal of experience in permitting and integration into the camera system. And as we transitioned into two thousand twenty, the rest of two thousand twenty-two, a lot of the building permits and occupancy permits that we're, that we wrestle with in the assessment office, Janet's going to help us streamline that process because our new system is going to automate that process to make it a whole lot more streamlined. So her experience in the permit center is going to be invaluable to the assessment team. Janet, thank you. And finally, that's our hidden pearl is Tommy Vog. He's a, he's our budget manner, manager. All of us in this, in, in county government know Tommy from whatever department you're in, helping us get through the Keystone conversion. Whether it was the accounting department, payroll, treasurer's office, commissioner's office, Tommy's been there to help all of us. And especially in the real estate assessment office, the amount of doubt, data and volume of that we manage in the assessment office, you have to have excessive data management skills, and Tommy has really introduced that to team and made the process go a whole lot smoother. Uh, in the second half continued, uh, we've got a couple of things we've done. We, we converted the two thousand twenty-two assessment data from the old Stonewall system to the new Keystone system in advance of our May third billing. That's fifteen thousand nine hundred records. Um, that's, that's a significant amount of records, but we heard earlier that other counties have much more. Fifteen thousand nine hundred is plenty for us right now. We updated Keystone's camera with revised land use data, twelve hundred eighty-five records. And we did that in advance of the tax billing that you're getting ready to receive May third. We've converted raw, raw record data from Stonewall to Keystone. That'll, this data will be used to build the new assessment records in Keystone. It's very difficult for new systems to understand how we calculate values of homes equitably. And to have the, the math and the data done in, in an organized fashion will enhance that conversion. And we've done a lot of work on the data as we went into Keystone. We built support property record calculations in Microsoft Excel. Microsoft Excel, that's, we're talking about uh, a difficult system to write complicated form, but so we've done that in order to help our, with, to help our new Keystone partners calculate values correctly. We felt like we had to know the, the details of how every calculation was done. Good news is, we were able to use that same data to generate supplemental bills for taxpayers and get caught up on some of our delinquent, not delinquent, but pass to supplemental bills that we want to get out of our office. And we've been preparing and scheduling board of equalization hearings for the spring. Again, this continues with two thousand twenty-two. Getting current on our supplemental billings, just for those in the audience who don't know what supplemental billings are. These are billings for homeowners who moved into their new, into their new home prior to the reassessment, but need to be billed for tax periods prior to this upcoming June billing. It's a calc, it's a time-consuming process and, and so we much more streamlined as we get into our new system. But staff developed the Excel spreadsheet I mentioned to you earlier, calculation process to determine prior year equitable values for every property in the county. Donna Prince worked closely with Janet Curry and Permit Center to review building permits from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, and compared these permits, one by one, to supplemental buildings completed by our commissioner revenue in both two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. It was a big task, going through a lot of permits, and they did it very, not, very nicely. They were able to find a hundred and sixty-three homes that had not been billed to date and have prepared those supplemental billings to go out this week with updated two thousand twenty reassessment data to support the supplemental billing. So we've got backup data to support that billing. Our new system can now handle our supplemental billings. We tested one last week. And so the next, these hundred and sixty-three homeowners who have been waiting for the bill will get that next week. These supplemental billings total over sixty million dollars and an expected three hundred thousand dollars in tax collections. This gives you a graphic of the timing of those bill, of those billings as they built up, starting roughly in May of two, uh, two thousand twenty. You'll see a slight peak here and looks like the bulk of the uh, supplemental bills were, were, where people got to access, access to permits on their homes. You'll see a big peak in April of twenty-one, another one in September of twenty-one. But in general, what you see on this, on this chart, the series of blue highlights here are a combination of uh, the house values that are, we're now going to do supplemental bills for over sixty million dollars. What's next? What, what's on our agenda? We've got to finish our data conversion in Keystone. We got strategically developed neighborhoods in Keystone for improved valuations. Uh, we, our, our new, our annual reassessment is due on one, one twenty-three, and we've got to do a better job of doing neighborhoods. Currently, the county's broken into two neighborhood classifications. One has fourteen thousand nine hundred records and they average three hundred seventeen thousand per parcel. And a second neighborhood, and I use neighborhood in quotes, it only has nine hundred sixty-three records and they average five hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is unacceptable. We got to have better neighborhood breakdowns for our, for proper classifications and sales analysis. With, with almost every property in the county under one neighborhood, we're not doing a good job currently of evaluating sales data and ratio analysis. And we're going to improve on that. Keystone, one of the next tasks along the same lines is to update Keystone with property sales data for ratio analysis by the neighborhood. We've gathered the data, we're working on, we've got data through December entered already. We're working on January, February and March as far as sales data. And all of that will go into our new neighborhood so we can get a better feel for how neighborhoods are performing in today's market. It's not just one big neighborhood. It's, it needs to be numerous. And Mr. Little's experience is going to help us decide what's the best strategy to break the county up into neighborhoods that, that makes sense to be paired together. We, we're going to convert stored building permits, which are already, starting in November, we started logging building permits in Keystone. And they're building up, supplemental bills need to go out on those. And in the next month or two, Keystone is going to be able to take those bills and convert them over to the real estate assessment office. And we'll get some supplementals out. And from then on, the supplemental process will be basically a monthly or weekly process. You won't be waiting for six months or a year to get your supplemental bill. Janet's experience in Permit Center will help us transition that, that entire process. We will look forward to streamlining that issue. We will, probably by the end of this year, we'll hire a second appraiser, so we'll hit the ground running with a full staff in January for next year. As you know, our newest evaluations are due one, due one, one twenty-three. The property card record, now this is not designed for you to read. I put, I put it on here just to show you that we do have property cards based on the new valuation for all fifteen thousand nine hundred records that we created in Microsoft Excel in advance of the Keystone system coming online. Uh, please don't try to read this. The purpose of showing you this was to show you that every house in this county has breakdowns by patios, by ruins, by bathrooms, by type of siding. And we, we build your record in order to determine your tax rate and your tax assessment on an equitable basis. And this data will go into Keystone and they'll calculate this for us in the next month or two. But we did this so we could get supplemental bills out. In summary. The new assessment office, independent of the commissioner revenue, is the gold standard in Virginia. We need what Gushon developed a decade ago, an independent assessment office. January one, two thousand twenty-three reassessment will be an improved product. Will be an improved product from where we are right now for the two thousand twenty-two reassessment. Better sales to assessment ratios are going to result in more state funding for schools. We're going to have improved supplemental billing timeliness. And we're going to have technology that's going to aid our, our office, improve the product with using pictometry for cha- uh, for change management and a more complete list of improvements within our assessment data. It's going to be an improved product. There's technology out there. These three companies are three companies that offer, uh, two of them are left, Nearmap and Eagleview offer similar and competing projects. But uh, one, one of these tools we're going to have to enhance our ability to capture and understand what property and what improvements are in the county. In closing, we will complete the reassessment this year, period. No excuses. No excuses. One year preparation has been done to get ready. Why? Because the board rightfully decided five oh, that it was the best methodology. I want to thank our assessment team for the work you've done, and thanks for your time tonight listening to this presentation.
All right. Uh, any comments, discussion? Not hearing any. We'll move on to public hearing. Public hearing.
Public hearing of one.
Public hearing, this page right here.
Ordinance.
Ordinance. No, I'm not ready to move on to public hearing. You didn't say anything.
I'm sorry.
I asked, I didn't make, you didn't hear me over there.
Are we going to give, uh, Mr., are we going to give Mr. Timberlake an opportunity to talk?
That's, it's, you requested this, Mr. Cox.
I know, I understand. I just questioned you. You, you went to Mr. Smith. I understand that.
Sure.
I don't know if Mr. Timberlake wants to speak.
Appreciate all the phone calls and emails and the things that I've gotten, and it was a very interesting presentation. I, uh, I've. My name was up there a lot, and I never got asked the first question. You heard multiple, I'm trying not to get upset. You, you heard multiple people speak and you saw team written all around that board up there. And Jamie Timberlake has never been asked a single question about anything that was up there. Mr. Byler, you've had my plan for over a year, and a lot of those bullets were in my plan, weren't they? It's funny. It, it just, it's, it's, it's sad, but it's comical, the, the presentation that's been made and, and the insinuations that something was done wrong. If you want to go back to that slide that said the, the um, commissioner of revenues incomplete billing, where did I get that billing, Mr. uh, Smith? You, you gave it to me. I billed what you told me to bill. So don't tell me that I did it incompletely. You that gave me zero access to the data. How am I supposed to bill something when I don't have the trust in the data or even access to it? So don't put my name up there and your smirk is, it, I can't even look you in the face. It, it is comical, the stuff that's going on. Comical to me. It's sad, but comical. I, I'll answer any questions you want. I, I would just like to show and share one little thing about the research that I've done since then. Last year, one of the big points that was made was this list of twenty localities that does things a certain way. Since two thousand and twelve, the trend of all localities that have gone to a annual assessment is actually going back to the commissioner revenues office. You heard Falkier speak, you heard Stafford speak. Prince George, that's an interesting one. Prince George, tomorrow night will do this exact same thing, and they have a twenty-six-page document that talks about the benefits of it being under the commissioner revenue. They have a nice thing that they laid out that has all of the duties, and they went through a process of who's going to do those duties. None of which was done by this board or your county administrator. There is no team. There is a bulldozer who buys people with money. Every single person on that team has gotten a raise, right? Open your eyes. Open your eyes. I thought there was going to be a motion made tonight. Thank you, Mr. Cox, for allowing me to speak. I, I don't know where to go from here. When you want to talk and really talk about what's going on in this county's administration offices, you let me know.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tim, like if you would, please stay at the podium.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be going through a series of emails with you.
Okay.
This hadn't, I hadn't told you, I hadn't even brought this up before now. I was going to do it independent of you, but I think it's more important that I do it with you there to get your reaction along with the boards. So the people in the audience will understand the chronology of all this. I'm going to go through a series of emails that the board received. The first email is February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. If you'll indulge me, I'm going to try to abbreviate where I can, but I think it's important for y'all to have the complete history and have the same knowledge that the board and others in the county and others around the state. Because what I'm going to be sharing with you this evening, it's not proprietary to this board. It's known in the region and it's known in the state. So I'm going to start with February twenty-eighth, and this is an email from Mr. Timberlake to the board of supervisors. Only. Board members, I had this information Friday, but I wanted to get more information. Mike, when I saw you at lunch Friday, it was just twenty minutes or so after I had gotten the initial information. I had to get out of the office to take a few minutes to get my head together. I was just beyond understanding what I had learned. I'm ashamed to say I work for Palitan when I hear these things from my colleagues and friends around the state. This is not what we are or who we want to be. I'm sure you've been told some fancy spun-up story about the new assessor. They started tomorrow that was hired for a ninety K plus. Well, here's the actual truth. I have verified with the IT software claim with the Prince George staff, I have confirmed with the tax department that she was denied the ability to sign the land book in Prince George last year due to her lack of experience. She was given a work plan by the tax department to earn the ability and did not finish it. She's been told that she has to redo the whole program at this point. I've talked to people who worked with her in Albemarle, Pennsylvania, and Roanoke. These are all places where she was a contractor or a county employee. I received a similar story. She's all talk and work. Prince George, Ms. Prince was fired from her three previous jobs. Most recent being just over a week ago where she was escorted from the county property immediately. She was not for, this was not for some political reason or change in leadership at the local level, it was for incompetence. She took the job approximately eight months ago with Prince George Assessor's office, which was in perfect order. It was a seasoned office with full tenure staff and a brand-new, top-of-the-line software system. The predecessor at the job was an excellent assessor. Well, he's respected around state for his knowledge and ethics. He took advantage of a huge. Well, he's respected around state for his knowledge and ethics. He took advantage of a huge opportunity to move up within the state in early twenty twenty-one. Last year, it was suspected Ms. Prince was not getting the job done because the appraiser too reported that she was doing all the work while Ms. Prince was supposedly working from home quite often. County IT records show Ms. Prince had never even logged in to the county software from her home. She had been on the job approximately six months when these things were discovered. November twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, she had to request an extension of approximately six months when these things were discovered. In November twenty twenty-one, she, I'm sorry, when these things were discovered. In November twenty-one, she had to request an extension from the circuit court to extend the Prince George reassessment because it would not be ready for the December thirty first deadline. And the state tax department would not certify our work due to the incompetent work plan and she was assigned. In the December, early January timeframe, Prince George BOS put her own notice that they wanted the real estate figures for their budget by a certain date. She missed the deadline and she was fired several weeks later. According to my source, as of this afternoon, she has still not been certified to sign off on any land book in Virginia because her credentials, experience did not meet the county standards. Prince George has called in the state tax department to clean up the mess and to get the reassessment out to the public by March thirty-first. After getting that on March, excuse me, on February twenty-eight and after thinking on it, I noticed that the county administrator wasn't included. So at that point, on March one, twenty twenty-two, I emailed Mr. Timberlake's email that I just read you to Mr. Smith and I copied the board. And the message was Ned, is this true? David. Then several emails went back and forth from Mr. Cox, you know, asking questions. And Ned asked for, he said he would give us a response, which he did. Ned gave us a response on March third. And I'm going to read that response because I think it's important that you here with the county administrator told the board. Good evening, all. On Monday afternoon, the board supervisors received an email from my commissioner revenue with a series of concerns, accusations about our new hire for chief successor. It's down to Prince. I was disappointed in our commission commissioner as he continued lobbying efforts to eliminate the action taken by the board last year is unproductive for all and very hurtful to our new assessor. Unfortunately, at a time where we have many exciting and time consuming tasks to accomplish, I feel the need to take the time to research and respond to this email. Paragraphes that followed are intended to clarify some of the items that caused him to be ashamed to say I worked for Palatan. Next paragraph, we have had the good fortune to receive the assistance from Mr. Rod Compton, the Director of Property Tax, RRMP for the Commonwealth of Virginia Office of General Legal and Technical Services. Mr. Compton has provided continued assistance to Palatan in our efforts to establish the new assessment office. And he is a huge advocate of the need to have an assessment office independent of the commissioner revenue's office. Now I want you to remember that last statement. Okay, I'll read it again. He is a huge advocate of the need to have an assessment office independent of the commissioner of revenues office. Mr. Compton has helped me tremendously with my recruitment efforts to find a replacement for Mr. Everest, providing me with strategies, references, guidance. Interestingly enough, Mr. Compton previously served as the chief assessor for Prince George County and he raised the bar for performance while in that role. It took Ms. It took Prince George seven months to find a replacement from Mr. Compton and when they did, it was Ms. Prince. Since the resignation of Mr. Everest, I have been a hundred percent focused on finding the right candidate for the position, networking throughout the Commonwealth on occasion, tracking out of state leads for the position. We infuriated Henraco County when we reached a to a well accredited staff member in their assessment office and she reversed her decision to join us. Now that's another interesting sense because I'm going to be talking more about that later. We infuriated Henraco County. I'll come back to that because when we say we infuriated Henraco County, you infuriated the county manager and the deputy county manager. And I'll explain why, because I had conversations with both individuals. We had discussions with many other qualified applicants, but confirmed just how difficult the assessor market is to find candidates. Next offer went to a former Palatan resident who had been the acting chief assessor role in Prince George during the timeframe between Ms. Compton and Ms. Prince. In fact, she was considering a position to stay uh, in Mr. Compton's office at the time, but Mr. Compton encouraged us to consider her in the role. She had the residential assessment experience that we were looking for and had good reports on her customer service skills and the knowledge of Palatan as a former resident fee appraiser in the county. She did not possess the commercial experience or the education certifications. As a result, she told us that she was looking for conversations similar to the colonial high successor. We met her salary request to uh, and an offer to her and she went dark on us, totally unresponsive to the offer and somewhat unprofessional by not responding. She mentioned in the interview that she went to school here with our commissioner revenue. She was very supportive of the need to have a separate assessment office away from the commissioner review. Uh, respond to a question that I ask every candidate. Some of the information provided to our commissioner must have come from the candidate. I come from the candidate as she is the only one that knew the amount of our lowball offer that our commissioner mentioned, and she apparently had opinions about Ms. Prince as her new supervisor at Prince George, but I cannot confirm the fact. A search for candidates was extensive. Upon hearing of the departure termination of Ms. Prince in Prince George, I immediately called Mr. Compton to require I should consider Ms. Prince for our position and he encouraged me to discuss the opportunity with Ms. Prince. I then called the interim county administrator Prince George to inquire about the termination, knowing that he could not disclose personal details. He was very professional and didn't ask him for confidential information, but I left the conversation, understand that his needs for year end assessment data for the budget preparation was not being met. Understand and respected his concerns from our reaction to that uh, heavy involvement in financial detail would have prevented the lack of communication that was going on between the assessor and the interim county administrator and fairness to the interim administrator. The assessor's office had been so well run for such a long time. It probably was not on his worry list. Next paragraph, after talking with Mr. Compton and the interim county administrator Prince George, I thought it'd be a good idea to interview Ms. Prince. She had residential, commercial, system conversion experience. We had talked with candidates who had commercial assessing experience. Some was just residential like the previous candidate, but none had the wide range of experience that Ms. Prince brought to the table. Following is a summary of all of her qualifications. Degree from Liberty University and Computer Service Public Administration, crest towards a law degree, region, Prince George County Chief Assessor. Contract appraiser for technical appraisal services, Georgia, Bright Minds. Similar firm to Wampler who compete who complete mass appraisals for localities. Now remember that name. Bright Minds, okay, because that's going to come up again and remember Georgia. And my mother, you know, Mr. Sniver Smith put up on the screen all the certificates that this individual has. And he also, in this email to us, goes through the same type of exercise, giving all the qualifications. Worked with Tyler Technologies Keystone competitor on ERP systems, commercial appraiser, Roanoke County. I want you to remember Roanoke County because that's going to come up here in a minute in another email. Numerous AAO International Association of Assessment Officers in State of Georgia certifications. Again, remember Georgia. That's going to be coming up here shortly. During the interview, it became obvious to Ms. Low and myself that there was a blend of experience, system development, positive personality and professional development made her a great option for Palatan. We're well aware of the differences. It can come up with employees and their managers. In this case, I feel that Prince George lost as Palatan's game. Next paragraph, I would like to transition my response to the accusations provided by our commissioner. The accusation, the bottom of the most and the first piece of Tuesday morning's conversation with Ms. Prince involved the idea that she was never at work and never logged in remotely. As I found out Tuesday, the reason Ms. Prince never logged in remotely is that she was in the office every day. In fact, Ms. Prince told me the interim county administrator joked with her that he saw her car in the parking lot. When he got there in the morning and he was there when he left joking that he thought the car had been abandoned. Next paragraph, the second accusation is a bit more complicated and I hope I do not miss or mistake any details. In Virginia, independent contractors such as Wamplerines can prepare the assessments as contractors and they must be certified. Assessments performed by localities and the staff without the use of a contractor fall under different set of confusing guidelines. Code of Virginia, section fifty-eight dot one thirty-two fifty-eight states that the local staff shall have the qualifications prescribed by the top, but by their department for the particular position held or shall include a combination of education, training, experience as deemed necessary for the performance of their duties without a definition of what the experience is required. Charles Everest has significant residential appraisal and management experience, very little commercial and land use experience. Ms. Prince has significant commercial residential experience with minimum strategic planning experience and significant experience in Virginia, in Virginia. Now, I want you to remember that too, because I'm going to be coming to that as well. Managing an office. Jamie Timberlake and Ned Smither have no other qualifications and experience for that position. Some localities make their own determination of the required combination of education and training experience as deemed necessary for the performance of their duty and never ask for help from Mr. Compton's office. And when necessarily enough, the Code of Virginia does not have a significant penalty applicable to a locality who lets their assessor receive on the job training. I agree with Prince George. If there is a portion of the duties performed by the assessor that needs additional training, less provide it to them and ask Mr. Compton's office for help. Long before Ms. Prince was hired, I've been in contact with Mr. Tom Little, the former Henraco County Chief Assessor who retired from Henraco in twenty twenty. Mr. Little agreed to contract with Palatan as needed for a few hours per week, helping us on any assessment topic, including our system conversion. Then during the tenure of Charles Everest, we didn't need Mr. Little's help yet as we had not begun our system conversion to Keystone. Once Charles Everest left, I met again with Mr. Little to make sure that he was still interested. In helping Palatan, he confirmed that he was still interested. Three weeks ago, prior to meeting or the hiring of Ms. Prince, we negotiated a fee of twenty-five hundred dollars a month for Mr. Little. That's thirty thousand a year. In exchange for his in-office consulting one day a week and phone availability the other. Now go back. My Mr. Timberlake says we're paying ninety thousand for the chief assessor. Mr. Compton explained to me today that Mr. Little's experience with managing, structuring workflow and assessment office was the perfect partner to Mrs. Prince's significant field experience. Mr. Compton said that he was excited that Mr. Little was involved. Finally, as Prince George tried to get their assessment software conversion completed after seven month assessor, Mr. Vacancy, Mr. Compton's office suggested that extension to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-two would be a safe strategy for the county and Prince George agreed to that strategy. It was a smart strategy that provided a safety net for the county just in case the system conversion was not ready by December thirty-first deadline. In conclusion, I'm sorry, our commissioner of revenue is upset about our new hire. It's tremendously unfair to judge someone that you haven't met. After spending three days in conversation with Ms. Prince discussing our new Keystone system conversion, our ideas for the office, I am even more excited. She'll be a great foot for us in Palatan. Our assessment office is going to be a success. I just wish we could all pull together, cheer for each other and accept the team Palatan discussion as they are made by the board supervisors. Again, on March fourth, there was a series of emails, one from Mr. Cox saying, when did you know? Did you know this when you hired Ms. Prince? And Mr. Smith responded, yes, we were aware. I asked the question, when were you aware? I didn't get an answer. On March fourth, the same day, Mr. Byerly responded to all of us by copying us in a letter of support for Mr. Smith. Again, thanking him for the job and for team Palatan. I'm not going to read that. But anyway, so at that point, the board is in a quandary. Who do you believe? Okay, I've got an email from my commissioner revenue. He takes the same oath I take when swearing in. I take an oath. So the board is sitting there with competing emails. So at this point, knowing that Mr. Compton over in the assessor's office at the Department of Tax, being a state employee, heading up a department, being part of a state agency, he's got a problem. So he has to respond because he's been asserted as taking positions on certain items that pertain to Palatan County. So on March seventh, we receive an email, the board, Mr. Smith is copied along with Mr. Timberlake. So now you're getting back from Mr. Compton who has both emails. He has the first email from Mr. Timberlake making the assertions. Then he has Mr. Smith's email from Mr. Smith explaining and giving his version. And the board is left to try to figure out, okay, who's got it right? So in in a timely way, we received from Mr. Compton, Palatan County Board of Supervisors. I apologize in advance for forwarding you an unsolicited email. However, it was brought to my attention that the Department of Taxation, my role as the Director of Property Tax, RRMP and myself personally were included in a letter to the board and county administrator Ned Smither. There are a few points in the letter where I feel compelled. I feel compelled to provide. to provide clarification of my and the Department of Taxation's role. Next paragraph, Powhatan County is fortunate to have two individuals in Mr. Smither and Commissioner Timbalake who are passionate about serving the citizens of this county while striving for the same end goal, delivering an accurate, uniform, equitable assessment. I have had nothing but pleasant, professional and productive interactions with both Mr. Smither and Mr. Timbalake. First, the property tax unit of the Department of Taxation provides advisory aid pursuant to the Code of Virginia. And he gives the code fifty, fifty-eight dot one two oh two and fifty-eight dot one thirty-two seventy-eight. Department and myself, both personally and as the Director of Property Tax, do not advocate for one specific method of assessment, of reassessment. I'll read that again. The department and myself, both personally, do not advocate for one specific method of reassessment. Once a locality has chosen a method of reassessment, the property tax unit upon request will provide any assistance necessary and prudent to support the local reassessment choice and provide guidance towards a successful reassessment. Mr. Smither may have mistaken the department's willingness to provide assistance to Powhatan County's real estate assessment office and support in filling the role of assessor as an endorsement for the specific methodology. However, that is not the case. The department provides the same level of support to localities and mother, which method of reassessment the locality has implemented. The department provides advisory aid and support to both real estate assessors and the Commissioners of Revenue from across the Commonwealth who manage successful reassessment programs. The method by which the locality chooses to perform the real estate assessment is solely the decision of a locality's governing body. Second, with regards to hiring Ms. Prince, as the assessor of the Powhatan County, my recollections are as follows. So just a pause there. At the beginning, you know, he's going back and he's correcting what we were told the board supervisors about Mr. Compton enthusiastically asserting, you know, about the favorability of bringing assessments in house. So he debunked that. Second, with regards to hiring of Ms. founder Prince, as the assessor Powhatan County, my recollections follow. On or about February 17th, I spoke to Mr. Smither about Prince George County dismissing their real estate assessor. After a brief discussion, Mr. Smither requested a contact number for Ms. Prince. I made him aware that I did not have contact information, but I would contact the office manager of the Prince George Real Estate Assessor's Office and relay the message to her, a personal friend of Ms. Prince, that Mr. Smither would be interested in talking to her. As I relayed to Mr. Smither, I had no direct information pertaining to the termination of Ms. Prince from her position at Prince George. Additionally, I made Mr. Smither aware that as to the best of my knowledge, Ms. Prince did not meet, did not meet the qualifications required of a staff assessor as provided under fifty-eight dot one dash thirty-two fifty-eight. Ms. Prince was hired as the assessor for Prince George County. The county administrator requested the department, that's Rod's department, issue a qualification letter confirming Mrs. Prince's, Ms. Prince met the above reference provisions of the Code of Virginia. It was determined that while Ms. Prince had significant appraisal experience, she did not meet the qualifying standards because she had deficiencies in verifiable experience. Now he uses the word, and this is important because I'm going to read you an email that follows, verifiable experience, education, training directly attributable to being a real estate assessor. Per the Prince George County Administrator's request, the department collaborated with the county's human resources department and a, and specific department heads to develop a work plan to guide her down a path focused on obtaining the knowledge, skills and abilities to be a successful real estate assessor in the Commonwealth. Ms. Prince received the work plan via Prince George County in August or September of 2021. Ms. Prince completed a portion of the plan and submitted some of the required documents. However, she did not complete the work plan. Department's last contact with Ms. Prince regarding the work plan was in early November. Ms. Prince may have completed items under the guidance of Prince George County, of which the department was not made aware. However, Ms. Prince's current status with the department remains unchanged. Mr. Smither was made aware of this. While the code provides latitude to the locality in choosing which reassessment process best fits its local needs, fifty-eight dot one thirty-two fifty-eight is clear that the assessing official employed by the locality shall possess the necessary knowledge, skills and abilities to meet the qualifying standards required of the professional assessor to perform the required duties. The real estate assessor's position is one, now this is important folks, a public trust is responsible for providing accurate, uniform, equitable valuation of all real estate in the locality. In the case of Powhatan County, I didn't realize it was this amount, the taxable and exempt land book values totaling in excess of 5.1 billion, 5.1 billion dollars with a taxable base approaching 4.9 billion. Mr. Smither did not, did not make me aware that Mr. Tom Little, former Director of Real Estate Assessments for Henrico County, no, he said he did make me aware. My apologies, he did make me aware and was engaged to providing mentorship and guidance to Ms. Prince. I did support that strategy as a positive move to ensure that the process, procedures and standards could be directly margin implemented for the upcoming reassessment. Thank you again for the opportunity, clarification for both my departments' role and my role in the assessment process. Again, Powhatan County is fortunate to have two such individuals. So after I received that, along with the other board members, I asked to see the application. The application that's on file, part of the official personnel record does not show any employment by Ms. Prince in Virginia. Now, she's just come from, as the county administrator recruited her, knowing that she had just been terminated from Prince George. And yet she was allowed to submit an application where she doesn't even show she worked for Prince George, much less as I found out from Mr. Compton and from others and did my own follow-up, that she had also worked in Rono County and Albemarle. So evidently we have a county where a application can be suborned falsely as part of an application process. Now, let me go and explain to you why that's important. Because now you've got an application and by the way, during the time period that she was supposedly or overlaps with working at Prince George, she reports that she was working for, I believe it was Bright Minds. Mr. Compton told me that this is a company where she was a contractor and worked in Pennsylvania County and also King William. The Department of Tax is down there right now in Pennsylvania County trying to fix it. And they're going to be, Mr. Compton told me, probably spending a half a million dollars to do another reassessment. King William County, who was doing assessments every six years, they employed the same company. Now they're going to have to do not six year, they've gone to an eight year because they have the same problems. So not only do you not have an application that shows that the individual worked in Virginia or Prince George, even after being recruited by the county administrator, knowing that she had been terminated, is now working in Powhatan County and we don't even have an accurate employment application. So I started doing again my own research because I wanted to know. So I called Rono County and I talked to the county administrator, Mr. Richard Kaywood. He confirmed with me, confirmed for me that Ms. Prince had indeed worked in Rono County for a little over a year. They ran into problems. But before I discuss what he told me, I'm going to read you what he sent me and Mr. Smither because he said, Mr. Williams, ethically, I'm required to let your county administrator know of our discussion. I said, I want you to. Please. Here's the email that was sent on March 17th. I was copied to Mr. Smither. Mr. Smither, as we discussed yesterday, Powhatan County Board of Supervisors member, David Williams contacted me regarding the employment history Donna Prince in Rono County's Real Estate Valuation Department. Mr. Williams indicated to me that he understand, understood that Mrs. Prince, that Ms. Prince had previously worked in Rono County and further understood that she had been terminated by Rono County due to issues with her credentials. Remember, you saw in the beginning in Mr. Smither's presentation, all those credentials filling up the screen. You saw in the email to the board, all the qualifications he listed. Mr. Compton goes on, as we discussed, I convey that Ms. Prince was employed by Rono County in our Real Estate Valuation Department from four twenty-nine to nine, nineteen to nine twenty-three, 2020. Ms. Prince was terminated for material misrepresentation regarding her credentials. Now this is in another locality, as soon as they found out, they fired her. Now go back to what Rod Compton wrote us. He's the one that made me suspicious because he said, we never could validate the credentials down in Georgia, but that wasn't his thing at that time because he was trying to come up with a work plan to get her qualified. So that's the situation you find us, or we find ourselves as a board. Tonight, we've received subsequent, subsequent to that, more emails and exchanges with the Commissioner of Revenue, bringing forward problems, you know, with the reassessment process. And I have these emails ready for anybody that wants them. It's all affordable, everything's here. You can have it. And this is your county and you need to know what we're doing to make sure it's being run the best possible way. Now everything that we're getting right now, going back to a couple of workshops ago, I expressed concern that we weren't going to get things out in time. And if we did, that was going to likely be errors. Yes, we are having problem with the conversion. But as I said, that workshop a couple of meetings ago, you shouldn't be programming right now trying to get things to work. Their cutoff date was back in November. And we're coming right up on a deadline. And the reason our backs are to the wall right now is because we didn't advertise in the beginning a tax increase. We didn't provide the public notice that's required under the Code of Virginia. Because Mr. Compton, after I raised the issue with him, he checked and sure enough, there was a tax increase and we did need to do the public notice and we need to hold the public hearing. So that puts our backs to the wall. That's the reason you're seeing these compressed timelines where we don't have any room for error. But I said at that meeting, that gentleman and Ms. Nunley, the treasurer, if for any reason the bills do go out or don't get out on time or if they're incorrect, it's not their fault. It's our fault because we haven't given them the right information the right way in a timely fashion. That's on us. They can't do their job without us giving them what they need. Now, I'm going to ask a few questions of the Commissioner of Revenue. Is this, anything I've said not true?
No, sir, I would like to say one thing though, if I can take a privilege. I want to apologize to Ms. Donna Prince. No person should have to go through this in public. I sent that email to y'all for a reason. And I didn't copy Ned Smither for a reason. And you didn't take my, you hired several and made several offers and you didn't hear me come out against Charles Everest. You never heard me come out against the other applicants that you had. I came out to defend Team Powhatan, the citizens, not Team Powhatan, the five of you. And I'm sorry to Ms. Prince that it had to go like this.
We agree, we agree. The reason, the reason Ms. Prince was mentioned tonight was because it was mentioned in the county administrator's PowerPoint presentation. And at that point, it's no way her name can be mentioned at that point. Okay, there's no way. I mean, we can say the new assessor, but at the end of the day, everybody knows what we're talking about. And that's the 800 pound gorilla in the room right now. Everybody knows what we're talking about and nobody wants to address it. And we keep marching along, going right down the road and things aren't getting better, they're getting worse. Okay, you've heard the citizens come down. Nobody's saying, they feeling good about what they're seeing. And this has gone on for some time. Let me go back to this thing about Henrico was infuriated. You know why they were infuriated? And the county administrator admitted this to me. They didn't answer an ad. That's a whole different animal. This is where the county administrator picks up the phone and calls an employee and asks them to apply. Now the county manager in Henrico County had told Mr. Smither, don't do it. This didn't happen just once, it happened multiple times. So because of that, we don't have a good relationship right now. And good relationships are the key. So I wanted to explain that as well. So I'll make the motion tonight unless Mr. Timbalake has something more he wants to add.
No, sir.
But I'll make the motion tonight to turn this function back over to the Commissioner of Revenue. And I voted. It's true, because Mr. Smith pointed out, we all voted. And the reason we voted was because there was a promise, expectation that assessments were going to be done better. that assessments were going to be done better. So obviously, if we can do anything better to serve you, we're going to do it. Now, no, this is how, no, this has come true. None of it. Nothing gives me any confidence going forward that we've put together any type of coherent assessment office that can meet the job and do it as well as the Commissioner of Revenue because he seems to be the subject matter expert these days. He's the only one that seems to be able to answer questions today. So he doesn't have, excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Compton.
The only thing I would say is that if, if that is the case, it, it needs to happen tonight because we don't have time. And I think the Treasurer can back up that timeline between now and May the 3rd to get things done and get them to the printer. So i- if you're talking about this current man book, it has to happen tonight. Or an extension on a deadline.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to make that motion tonight and vote on it tonight because it has to happen. Or otherwise, we can keep marching down the same path we're going down. But I'll be honest with you, I am not happy. I've said this in public meetings, going back several meetings ago. The communication in this county is terrible. Yeah, I can give you repeat examples. We're hiring a new deputy county administrator. I had to find out from a constituent. Now, I'm the supervisor, and I wasn't even insulted. Wasn't even informed.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams, excuse me. I think if we just stay on the topic and you make your motion, we'll, we'll be good, okay?
We're great.
Okay. You want to make your motion?
I will make the motion that we move the assessment function back to the Commissioner of Revenue effective immediately.
I second.
For discussion, comments, questions?
Can I say something, Mr. Chair?
Sure, absolutely.
My name is not part of this top five devoted commissioner, devoted office, took it away from Jamie Timbalake. But I will, um, I've been bombarded by my constituents in District Two. I've been to several events in the county this weekend, starting with Earth Day on Friday. I've been to Village Vibe, I've been to several events, and I could not enjoy myself because I was bombarded by questions and concerns from my constituents, not just from District Two, but from Powhatan County. I never liked the way that the office was taken away from Jamie. I did not approve of it all. When I ran for District Two Board of Supervisors, that was one of my campaign promises. I've talked to 25, I've knocked on 2,400 doors in the county, in District Two. And over half of those constituents supported Jamie Timbalake in the Commissioner of Revenue's office handling the assessments. And, um, I just want to say that I can't be, uh, I was not part of the five votes before, but I will be part of the votes tonight to send it back to Jamie. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I don't really care who does the assessment function. I told Mr. Timbalake that.
Yes, sir.
I simply want it done well, consistent, and timely. Mr. Smither put up on his slide almost a year ago, there were three changes up for the Board of Supervisor consideration. Annual reassessment program rather than every two years. Assessment will be done by county assessors, not a subcontractor to a third party. And we would move the assessment function from the Commissioner of Revenue to the county. Everyone agreed with the first two points, and there was disagreement over who would own the function. Board of Supervisors decided to move the assessment function from the Commissioner of Revenue to the county. I was one of the supervisors supporting that change. After almost a year of effort, I no longer support the movement of the assessment function from the Commissioner of Revenue to the county. The process was flawed from the beginning. There was no transition plan, no transition plan at all. There've been a variety of problems along the way. One of the more interesting ones is solar panels. Have 90-plus families that have been charged for solar panels. That never happened under the Commissioner of Revenue. And the only answer for those folks that are overcharged is to go to the Board of Equalization. Mr. Smither, have we notified those people?
I'm not sure the status of that, Mr. Cox. I know they're in line to get their credit.
No, they don't get a credit unless they go to the Board. Have they been notified that they were overcharged?
We're taking care of that, Mr. Cox. We were.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Got it. Granddaddy of all problems of staffing. People have been hired, people have left. Staffing has almost been a constant state of flux. The most recent senior staff addition has led me to a vote of no confidence in Mr. Smither's management. Without going into details, I firmly believe we do not have the leadership in this title area that will properly serve the citizens of Powhatan County, provide the technical expertise needed for consistent and fair assessments. So I'm happy to see Mr. Williams' motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Comack.
If you were an employee and you were looking for a locality to come to work at, and you just watched what you watched tonight, would you, would you apply for a job at Powhatan County?
No.
Ms. Prince has sat there in the audience and been berated for over an hour. Has Mr. Williams ever once picked up the phone and called and met with her? Asked her anything about her credentials, any about her work history, anything? You know, we're going to turn this over to Mr. Timberlake tonight, he'll have three votes. How is he going to recruit and retain? What's your budget going to be?
It's going to be hard.
You know, how are you going to deal with Keystone issues? I would like to at least have a workshop. We have a workshop to where we're going to put a Christmas tree, but yet we're giving, a year ago, we all made a unanimous decision, you know, minus Mr. McClung, that we wanted it to fall under the county administrator. We all agreed with that. That was quote unquote, "the gold standard." What we researched, you guys can go back and watch the tapes. We all very laudatory towards Mr. Smither. He's had a lot of challenges. He's had supervisors candidly call other localities sabotaging his hiring efforts. And you wonder why we're struggling. You wonder why we're struggling. I can tell you why we're struggling. We have a lot of problems up on this board, a lot. And, you know, it's kind of funny. Mr. Williams, you've been on this board a decade, a decade. And only this year, miraculously, did you go to the Department of Taxation to highlight a miscalculation. You know, Ms. Schubert, and not to put you on the spot, how, how many years have you been calculating the new construction for the equalized taxation rate? Since 2014, 2014. And then, then in the beginning of, we're on a time crunch. Yeah, we're on a time crunch. But he was first asked the Department of Taxation, according to Mr. Compton in an email, the beginning of March. It wasn't brought to our attention until the beginning of April, a month later. So my point being, there's a lot more that meets the eye. And I would encourage all you, do your research, watch the videos. You know, we've, we've been on this board. We were the dream team. We were going to be the board that changed everything. We got on, has not happened that way. But it's kind of interesting. It's hard to have a well-run county, within a decade, you've had five county administrators, six planning directors, three county attorneys. Help me understand how you are going to have a productive, well-run locality with that kind of turnover. I mean, you, we come up here, staff's berated, literally. I mean, taken through the coals. And we wonder why staff morale is kind of low. We wonder why we can't recruit and retain people. There's a reason. I would like to suggest a workshop to see if the following could get answered before we make this change. How would you, how are you going to manage the transition, the budget projection, the recruitment and retention plan? Are you going to use Melissa? Are you going to use, you know, do it yourself? How are you going to get an assessment out this year? I know there's issues with Keystone. Are you familiar with those? How will that happen? What would be your timeline in getting this done for the billing? And the other thing, speaking of transparency, clarity, perhaps we should have an audit of the Commissioner of Revenue. I mean, would you consent to an audit?
Absolutely. I get audited four times a year already by different agencies. Bring it on.
Okay. All right.
Go there, please go there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Comack. I'm just going to have a little brief drink of water. I'm going to agree with quite a bit of what she said. I know that's not going to shock you. However, I will go a little bit farther with a couple of things. And as some talk to you in a tone that they want to educate you, I don't view it as education or educating you, but I will view it from the standpoint of trying to keep the information flowing, which I think Mr. Williams is trying to do. I think there's others on the board that try to do that, too. This past Friday, I met with Mr. Compton at 600 East Main Street, the Department of Taxation. I know some of you know me, and you, you've known me a long time. One gentleman's standing right there. I have a lot of relationships with people in this county, good relationships. But I'm going to say, tell you some things tonight that will probably change some of them because I'm going to stand up here or sit here and tell you about how you run something, a company, a business, a county. And I'm going to tell you, dysfunctional, the county. You got one common denominator in the last 10 years on this board. You've had five county administrators. Something's wrong. It's the same drumbeat and drumbeat and drumbeat. You want to run a successful company? If any of you in here own a company, try changing the leadership of that company every two years and see how your company runs. Are we perfect? No. Can this five-member board work together? Sure, we can work together. There's some people that needs to bury egos. Bury them. A guy told me one time, "Mike, you can't put that ego in the, in the, in the, on the deposit slip. So put it in your back pocket." I don't want to sabotage the county. I don't want to sabotage the county administrator. I think he's got a hard job. I think you come to this board meeting and you look, and, and board meetings, month after month, and you look, and you see what he deals with. He deals five days a week with putting the fires out that gets created by us up here. It's not good. And you do wonder why the morale may be low. There's contributors to that. Lots of them. You can't keep changing horses just because the horse doesn't ride the way you want to ride. You bought the horse, ride the horse and train the horse. Put a little time and effort in it. Is there anybody perfect? I'll tell you now, it's not Mike Byerly, and certainly not this gentleman. I am a little bit concerned tonight, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lachney a question. When you bring out Ms. Prince's information, I understand FOIA's and how you can pull up emails. But when you call another county administrator and you, and you make that conversation kind of public on a personnel matter, is there anything we need to be concerned about with that?
Well, FOIA allows you to keep information private, it doesn't require it. There's no, counties aren't required to keep FOIA.
Personnel matters.
Yeah, I mean, FOIA allows us to keep it quiet, but it doesn't require us to keep it quiet.
The county, King William, was brought up, I think under Bright's Mind was the name of the company that maybe Ms. Prince worked for. I, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't get into it and go down that path. But I will tell you, in my meeting with Mr. Compton Friday, King William County was one that came up. And I think the Commissioner of Revenue, who'd been there 26 years, Google it, sound right?
Yes, Mr. Timberlake.
She resigned over an audit. She wouldn't let him come into her office. I'm happy to hear you say, "No problem," and happy to.
I just want to clarify, that was a performance audit, which I will not let you do. You want to audit the books? Bring it on. She was being audited for her personnel. That's why she turned it down.
There's, I mean, there's a lot of issues in talking with Mr. Compton. And I know you've got a relationship with him. Mr. Williams has talked to him, Mr. Smithers has talked to him. The, uh, the conversations are pretty clear as to what he would like to have happen. But he was very honest about, you know, you, you get into a political field, and they got, everybody wants to watch what they say and how they go about it. But I'll tell you, this is what he said to us. Perfect storm. That's what you guys did. And I think he's right. I, I don't disagree with. Perfect storm. That's what Powhatan County Board of Supervisors did, April 19th, 2019, or 2021. He went to transition to an in-house. That takes time. That's a major change. His words, not mine. Expected to be 36 months for your, your, your transition to be working. You, meaning we, the Board of Supervisors, agreed. Oh, Mr. Timberlake, I mean, there was two, the two things with this we all agreed on. It's just who was going to run the office, that we didn't.
Absolutely.
We voted to go from every other year assessments to every year assessments. You ever assessed anything, Mr. Timberlake?
Yes, sir, quite often.
What is it?
All supplementals. Once the reassessment is done and that book gets turned over, my office has assessed every single thing since then that's a change.
Would the supplemental that you're referring to be new construction?
New construction and splits.
Okay. Explain what splits are, because maybe somebody wants to know.
When property is divided.
Right. New construction has a value attached to it based upon how much they paid to construct it. Am I close?
No, sir.
Well, what, how do you know what the, what it is?
You have to use the most previous assessment data, which is what everybody seems to think is complicated, and it's not.
Right.
It's a chart that says brick, square footage, arch roof, gable, and it spits out a number. It's not complicated.
Right. So when you do that assessment, are you certified?
I am qualified by the election, is what the state code calls it. The people have put their trust in it. I do have a certification.
I remember last year's 11,200 votes to comment from you, trust me. I, I listen, I may not, you may not think I'm listening, but I listen.
I do have certifications. Scott Mioski that spoke earlier was actually my first instructor in real estate. I have been through multiple VAAO and state things to earn my masters.
For the Commissioner of Revenue?
Yes, sir, for, for real estate, for real estate and assessment, real property assessment.
So back to the other thing that made us the perfect storm, Keystone. That's the software that we're in the middle of. That's not going to change. We're still going to have to deal with that. Mr. Timberlake's going to have to deal with that.
And when, if you, if you want to have that conversation, that planned tonight, I, I can give it to you because it's already made. It, it's. it to you because it's already made. It, it's on these little bullets about who's covering what and who's doing what. And I have three other commissioners who are already on Keystone who have offered to send their employees down and make this happen in the next five days.
Okay. So what's gonna happen in the next five days? You're gonna have everything all set from, from Keystone? You'll be all happy with them and everything?
We will know that in the next five days.
What are you gonna know?
I, I, I'm gonna take what I know from the end result of last year, Wampler's numbers, and we're gonna run them against Keystone, which is the same thing I did with the supplementals that we're talking about, the 163 supplementals that match nothing in our system. No number in those supplementals can I match anywhere to those complicated formulas that we make. So I, I have to be comfortable with those, which the supplementals are not a priority. I mean, I want to admit, they're gonna be the second priority after we get this book straight for our current billing.
The perfect storm, hiring.
Agreed.
I don't need to ask you that. I, I know the answer. It's a very difficult, challenging thing. How you're gonna hire, who you're gonna hire? How do you find qualified people? I hope that whoever you hire, nobody starts investigating them. It's your hire.
I hope they do.
It's your hire.
It's, it's their money.
It's your hire.
We, we did disagree. We can disagree.
And we will. And you're the one that gets held accountable.
Yes, sir.
The battles, according to Mr. Compton, Pennsylvania, Scott County, Rockingham County, and of course, King Williams, all have issues going on, very similar to what's going on in Palatine. His words, not mine, the gold standard is to do in-house in Virginia, which is what we're talking about doing. The difference is who's gonna run that office. I think if my memory is right, Henrico, Hanover, Goochlin, all do it in-house outside of the Commissioner of Revenue. And what Mr. Williams said last year were all three triple-A bond rated, right? Now, the other thing that I heard a lot a year ago, I didn't get any emails. Got a couple, not, shouldn't say not any. But the other thing that I would say is the checks and balances. I don't think they come from you, Mr. Timberlake. I think they come from the Board of Equalization. I think when I listened to the county administrator or the county attorney last year, that was clearly what he said. The, the checks and balances come from the Board of Equalization in this county. Okay. Do we need to do a roll call vote, Mr. Laxny?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Cox.
Just one thought. The perfect storm analogy is an interesting one. I just would remind you that it is Mr. Smithers who sailed us into that storm.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Do we need to have a roll call?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment because I'm as anxious as you are to get on with you. Ms. Carmack, you know, you said that, and I believe Mr. Barlow said, you know, we've had five county administrators in 10 years inferring that something's wrong. My golly. You know, that averages at what? Every two years we're changing, and the common denominator is David Williams. Well, let's, I always like going back and testing things. So when I came in, in 2012, indeed, I was part of a board that requested the resignation of the county administrator. Who had been in office, I believe, I'm going from memory, maybe eight years or longer. And before that, we hadn't had any changes that I was aware of where the county administrators had been asked to resign, fired, can't remember. Going back, that goes back a while. But anyway, going back to my decade. During that decade, after we asked for the resignation of the current county administrator, we hired Elmer Hodge as the interim. He was a retired county administrator, had worked in Chesterfield and worked 24 years in Roanoke County. But he was the interim that was hired. We had obtained him through the Institute of Government at Walden Cooper to come in specifically just four years or less, which he did. Then we had Ms. Wilder come in and she served till she retired. Then we had Mr. Voorhees come in who we came on board, this board, we asked for his resignation. And then we hired Mr. Smithers. And there was unanimity. And all of you know, when you hire somebody, you don't know if the person you interviewed is gonna be the person that shows up for the job. And because you agreed to hire him, that doesn't mean that you, if you know something's wrong, that you continue on because, as you've heard me say, as the elected officials, we're responsible for your customer service, for everything that we're supposed to provide, public safety, education, our priorities, it's on us. And if you're not getting that, it's on us. And as far as sabotage, folks, this is not a sabotage. This was about being confronted with somebody, something that nobody went looking for. I didn't ask Mr. Timberlake to send me an email. I didn't request that. I didn't expect the response I got back from Mr. Smithers. Mrs. Smithers is the one that mentioned Mr. Compton. So asking somebody and trying to get at the truth, to try to understand for good decision-making about what's going on, that's not sabotage. That's called doing your job. It's not sticking your head in the sand pretending it doesn't exist. So I'd just like to clarify those two points, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate your opinion. The vote, we need to do a roll call, Ms. Laxny?
I'm gonna give you a very long answer, more, more answer than you asked for.
Okay.
Technically, we have an ordinance in place. That ordinance has a Department of Real Estate assessment with a real estate assessor designated as the head of the department. You can make a motion tonight to appoint Mr. Timberlake as that assessor. I assume we're gonna want to fix the ordinance, though, because it says the assessor reports to Mr. Smithers. So tonight you don't need a, a roll call, but I'm gonna have to bring you back some ordinance amendments, which will require a public hearing and a roll call.
Agreed.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, you gotta have a public hearing.
Tonight's motion would simply be to designate Mr. Timberlake as the assessor, chief assessor.
Right.
Pursuant to the existing ordinance, and then I'll have to draft some amendments to the ordinance to get everything else in line.
And what would be the timeframe for you? I mean, yours will be quick. We just gotta figure out when we can do it.
Next meeting. Turn around. Couple days.
So is our next meeting May the 2nd? I mean, that's a
Next week, next Monday.
I think that's the
You gotta have time to advertise the ordinance. It's technically an ordinance change, so you gotta do the advertising.
14 minutes.
Yeah.
So let me make sure I understand. Chief assessor reports to who?
Well, under the current ordinance, the county of section 70-37, the county assessor shall report to the county administrator. I think we all understand that's not gonna happen by constitutional law, Virginia constitutional law.
Right.
So I will correct the ordinance to bring it in compliance with the Virginia Constitution. So that, because our Commissioner of Revenue by law doesn't report to the county administrator. So tonight's motion designates, would designate him as the chief assessor, and then I will draft the ordinance changes.
Does he have to work for the county administrator to be designated?
Doesn't say that.
It, it does say it's designated to the county administrator.
Says the county assessor reports to the county administrator, but I'm comfortable that the, the board, if it chooses to designate Mr. Timberlake as the assessor, that all that's necessary, some ordinance corrective action, I, I think it's, we can do it.
Mr. Chairman. The yes, Mr. Cox.
I would like a roll call vote.
Of course.
Let's keep it easy.
How about we just go to, I'm looking, May the 23rd. I mean, that's our next board meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's mission critical to change the ordinance. Yeah, if you designate Mr. Timberlake as, as the assessor, the Constitution of Virginia sort of fixes the reporting part of it, and then all we're doing is bringing our ordinance in alignment with the law.
All right, Mr. Smith, we need a roll call vote. So, Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
No.
Mr. Barley.
No.
Now, let's move on. I think we can go to our public ordinances now, Mr. Cox. That'll be first up, public hearing, ordinance 0-2022-13.
Please, Michael, quick. Somebody asked for bathroom burgers. If you may go quick.
You ready, Ms. Hopkins?
Give me one second. Many, this is for fee schedule. I thought I was down later as well.
It's the fee schedule, Mr. Chairman. Fee schedule, yes, sir.
Ordinance, the O-2022-13 is amending our ordinance for our appendix A fee schedule. Every year, we send out the fee schedule to the various departments who handle the fees and their departments and ask for changes requested. The changes to the fee schedule this year were increasing some building inspection fees. The water and sewer rates will be, are proposed to be increased, to be in line with the increase with Chesterfield and the fire and rescue fees, and then just some administrative changes. A lot of times it's cleaning up language and verbiage. So because it's an ordinance, we do have to do a public hearing, and we did advertise the ordinance to the Palatine today on April 13th and the 20th.
Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Timberlake's got his hand raised, but he had it raised after the last public comment session, so I'm not sure he, he still means to have it raised. Mr. Timberlake, did you want to speak on the, on the fee schedule? This is Max Timberlake. Max Timberlake. Mr. Timberlake, Max Timberlake, if you'd like to speak on the fee schedule, please unmute. There you go. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll still reserve my time for the end of the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Not seeing anyone coming down to speak on the fee schedule. Ms. Shubert, are you finished? Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 0-2022-13.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi.
Next up, ordinance O-202214, redistricting amendment to the Palatine County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 34.
So, well, this is one we've discussed a couple times. Due to the last census, we have to redistrict to evenly distribute the population amongst the five districts. So we've put together a plan that does just that, receives no public comment on it to this point. And most recently, Mr. Laxny secured the approval of the AG's office for our proposal. So the last step in this is for the board to hold a public hearing and adopt the ordinance, which in working with Ms. Alexander's office, we propose to have effective July 1 to not cause confusion or interfere with upcoming elections.
All right. We'll open the public hearing to the public. Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith? Zoom is clear, Mr. Chairman. Not seeing anyone. We'll close that. Board members, any questions, comments?
I move we approve ordinance O-2022-14.
Second. Thank you, Mr. McClung. Roll call vote.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Cox.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi.
Next up, public hearing 02022-15, case 22-01, AFD.
Yes, so I have two cases that are AFDs. We'll talk about the first one, but they are right next to each other, so they're kind of in tandem. They're both down at the end of Worsham Road. The first one's for Roger Walker. He has 24, 23 and a half acres to be added. He has one acre for the home site. It's part of the Appomattox Forestville District, which you can see on this map, southern section of the county. So they count to that western tip. And both of these would be put into agricultural forest district. So, but we need to vote on each one.
We'll open up for the public hearing. Any comments? Everybody want to speak? You want to zoom?
Zoom is, zoom is clear, Mr. Chair?
Okay, we'll close the public comment period. You want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 0-2022-15. Do we need the case number?
Case, case. Just the ordinance number, okay.
I'll second.
All right. Any questions, comments by board members? Roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
I'm
Ms. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi.
Talk about progress. Go ahead.
Literally the exact same status, except this is next door at 4021 Worsham Road and is owned by Kathy Toons, Tax Map 5027 Act.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment period for that. Ordinance. Mr. Smith, anyone on Zoom?
Zoom is clear.
I make the motion, Mr. Chair, to approve ordinance 2022-16, case number 22-02 AFD.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi.
Next, ordinance 02021-27, adoption of the 2021 Long Range Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Hopkins?
So tonight, we've brought you just the transportation section. If you recall, back in October, we passed it with the 2019 Conference of Plan, needed TP dot review. In the intervening time, we did get V dot review. They had no comments on the plan. They did send along a funding sheet, kind of informational, said you might include this in your plan, maybe you don't. My thought is it's, it's stuff that most of you already know, and it's probably more informational. But if there were other comments or other things you saw in transportation plan you'd like to add, here for comments.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment period for this.
Could they add to the comprehensive plan?
Name and address, sir.
Oh. My name is Carl Schwundeman from 1727 Teresa Lane. Could they make it, could they add it to the comprehensive plan to have it written down? That they want to add a bike path or sidewalk from the village of Palatine all the way to the Palatine County line into Chesterfield County? Because on Chesterfield County's master plan, they actually have a bike path proposed that would run from the Watkins Center up to the, the Palatine County line, would be built as a paved trail. And could they make it, could they add a bike, a bike path running from the village up 522 to the, to the Goochlin Courthouse sidewalks? And include, include maybe, include us sidewalks along Huguenot Springs Road as the area gets rapidly developed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to zoom, Mr. Smith?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chair.
Board, comments, questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna make a motion. I'll make the motion then. I move we approve ordinance amendment O-2021-27.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Questions, comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Ms. Cox. I have a number. I have a number of questions, okay? If we could go to page 91.
If we could go to page ninety-one. There we talk about securing transportation funding. We're missing the entire CBTA funds discussion. That's not in there. That needs to be added. The whole section that we approved, approved earlier is not really being covered in here, so that's missing. And it's going to require some work, I don't know that you can, I won't try and patch it in tonight, okay, but the whole CBTA discussion and smart scale needs to be in there.
You have another question?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's go to page ninety-three. Go up the top, strategy TR four A says, consider local financing, use local financing, that's the, we have, we have local financing now that we can use, we have local funds. So it's not, we don't have to consider anymore, we have, we have dollars we can actually spend. I have questions about the complete street design, particularly on new roads and improvements to existing roads.
Where are you on there?
Five B. TR five.
Okay.
Should it be, okay, should it be implemented, the whole, should we have bicycles and pedestrians on new roads throughout the county? We really wanted to have a trail system study done, so we know where we really want it, so it's not fragmented. TR eight. TR eight A B, Mrs. Carmack, we don't have to worry about access management standards. Okay, so that comes out. If we will go to page ninety-six. When you get to ninety-six, you'll see bicycling for both commuting and recreational purposes. We don't have commuting for bicycle in Powhatan County, we tried to remove this once before.
But I couldn't remember if we.
No, we, we talked about it.
We did talk about it.
But it wasn't taken out, so commuting, commuting is not part of, is bicycling for recreational purposes. Next thing I have is ninety-nine, page ninety-nine. We have the middle disruption, Anderson Highway, Page Road. Reconsider the, reconfigure the intersection into restricted crossing or, and R cut. Nobody that I know of liked an R cut. Where we'd had a problem, which is on the bottom of page one hundred, the Anderson Highway Maiden Road, Emmanuel Church Road, we just took, we just took it out and left it blank. I think that's what we should be doing for the R cut for Anderson Page Road.
I mean, I, I know everybody was all about the R cut, you know, that what went on with that, at least some of that conversation, but isn't that what V dot suggested?
But they suggested on Anderson Highway Maiden Road, a whole seventeen million dollars, right? Okay, and we said, we said no to that, that's, I'm just, the, the two are very peril, or have the same solution.
Well, if we take it out, then it just leaves it open to whoever wants to do whatever in there, it's still got to come up here.
Excuse, excuse me, you don't want to take it out, because if you ta, if you do not have it in this plan, they don't have to do it, you want it in here. So if you want a road improvement down at Page Road, it may not necessarily be an R cut, but you want something in this long-range transfer, transportation plan iterating that you want some sort of improvement, it may not be an R cut, but you.
So that's, I'm looking for, I'm looking for an answer.
You want something, I mean, if we want to use that as a placeholder, but I don't want to take it out.
Let's just leave it in as a placeholder, and it'd be done, and it's there, at least there's something there at that point, which keeps us in the, in the, in the, in the thought process.
I just wanted everybody to understand that I talked to no one that liked the R cut.
Well, it's Mr. Williams' district, I think.
Yes, well, that's, that's Mr. Williams and Mr. McClung, they share that intersection.
You, you would like it to stand there as Page Road, but you would not want the intersection or improvement described, is that fair?
Say it again, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
You want Page Road listed as a place for improvement, but you don't want the intersection or type of project described, I guess. You don't like the R cut apparently, but maybe you want something else.
I understand Mrs. Carmack's point, I think it's a good point. You, you need to have something in there, otherwise, you know, we're, we're saying you don't have to do intersection improvement, so I totally agree with what she's saying, and also agree with Mr. Cox, I don't know of anybody that wants that R cut there, after all the attention it received with two rezonings that came in down there, so what do we put in there that does the placeholder that Mr. Carmack says, and I agree with, that we need, that says we need something there, we're not quite sure which one of the alternative or some combination of new innovative things that are coming out from V dot that we could use, or would be applicable that we would approve, that V dot would go along with, so that, that's where I need a little bit of help. What do you think, Frank?
I mean, how about new innovative intersection? It's a guide anyways, that's just sounds like something that the future will.
Pretty general.
Appreciate anything I got, so.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman.
How about sold?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If we are serious about putting the CBTA discussion in here, we're going to have to defer this thing, okay?
So, if I can clarify that too, so this is just transportation plan for your review, we're going to bring the full item back next month, so we can get all, whatever changes you'd like now to get to go next month.
I'm sorry, you totally lost.
So this is just showing you the transportation chapter, the entire comp plan is not in.
No, no, CBTA has to be part of the transportation, okay?
I don't disagree.
Okay, which means you're going to have, as far as I can see, we'll have to defer this, so you can bring it back, so we have something to look at.
Absolutely, my plan is to bring everything back to you.
No.
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 No, we are only approving chapter nine, there, I think nine or whatever this is, yeah, the transportation, that is it, the comp plan is not coming back for review, it's just chapter nine.
So, Mr. Latchney, can we approve this with the amendments, and then bring that back next month, these amendments, the corrections that Mr. Cox was bringing out?
You could, you could do it one of two ways, you could either defer and wait for the final copy, you could approve this subject to the amendments being adopted, you could say, we're adopting this with the understanding that on the next agenda, there will be amendments made, and you could, you could do it either way, you could either.
You're okay with deferring until the final document?
So, so you can see what you're doing.
No, I, I agree, I agree.
I have one last thing.
Okay.
Okay. Page one oh one. Page Road, widened pavement, two times, we've taken out widened pavement for every other.
Yeah. It was in the CBTA graph, we looked, for the, the five road projects, we looked at earlier, it was out.
Yep, so I would take out those. Ms. Carmack has.
I was gonna say, can I amend my motion?
Yep.
To defer?
To defer something.
I know.
Yeah. May twenty-third is the next board meeting.
May twenty-third.
I'll second.
Do you want to hold the public hearing tonight?
Yeah, we did.
We can do that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can do one of two things, you can hold it tight and close it, or you can hold it and leave it open until next week.
Let's, let's hold it and leave it open. We'll open the public comment period now for this.
Have we already had it? I forgot.
We already.
Yeah.
Don't know, we already have it?
Yeah.
Oh, we did, we did, we did, we did.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Schmitt.
Yeah.
My mistake, I forgot Mr. Schmitt had spoken.
Yeah, sorry, I was thinking it was back on the other one, the other one wasn't, it was the AFD.
But, but I do think we need to make a motion to keep, hold it open, if you want to hold it, if you're going to defer that you hold it open.
Will we have to advertise it again?
No, that's the whole point, if you.
Okay.
Tonight decide to hold it open, you don't have to advertise.
So in the motion, defer, leave the public comment held open, Ms. Carmack?
Correct.
To the twenty-third of next month, is that the right date? Yep, and I'll second that, so, roll call, Mr. Schmitt?
Mr. Williams. Hi. Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi.
Thank you.
We'll make sure you get with Mr. Cox on all of those two, Frank. Next up, public comment period. War is open, three minutes if you're an individual, up to five minutes representing a group.
Oh, my name is Carl Schwundeman from seventeen twenty-seven Teresa Lane. I have a question, I saw on the transportation plan tonight that they wanted to fund man road, the man road extension in, in the, in the, to the Central Transportation Authority, could they include build extending the sidewalk along man road that currently ends the library? Could they include extending that to the end of man road when they build the, when they go to extend the new road, because there's a lot of bike, there's a lot of hiking trails and stuff that, that come up to man road in that area? I also have a question about that, that, that transportation plan, is that thing actually going to determine what road projects make it onto the official list for the county?
Thank you, Mr. Schmitt.
You're gonna get in one, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll have someone get to you, Mr. Schmitt, they'll call you tomorrow.
I just want to be sure, this is the public comment for the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Correct, okay, good.
Yes, sir.
All right, David Anderson, twenty-three sixty-six, Bell Crest Social, two comments about tonight's meeting. One of them's about the assessor's office conversation that we had, and I think the conversation you had was probably the right conversation to have. I think that having it in public, much of it was inappropriate, somewhat following on the lines of Ms. Carmack's comments. It seemed to me was ideal for a closed session, and I'm very surprised that, you know, out of the six or seven of y'all on the stage, that nobody didn't raise their hand and say, hey, shouldn't we do this in a closed session? Because I think it has a very chilling effect on, not just the, the woman y'all were talking about, if you retain her, I'm not quite sure how she can walk in the office tomorrow or talk to the public, but, you know, that's something y'all need to figure out, it's probably going to affect the other four people in the office, and it's probably going to affect the hundreds of employees, including the, the schoolteachers in the, in the county, these are public employees, and it, it, it was, it was rough to watch, it really was, in public. Y'all should have had the conversation, but I didn't want to participate in it or hear it, but I did. The second thing is, over the last couple months, I think every person up on the stage to a person, other than maybe the county attorney, has talked about board dysfunction, talked about low morale in the county, and have talked about communication issues between the board and staff, and it kind of culminated tonight, and I think some people really spoke from the heart about those issues, and I think it's good that you said it out loud, and you, in essence, to me, kind of admitted, we have a problem. Now, the really tough part, it comes, right, is do you have the will, the collective will to do something about it? And if you do, it won't be easy, it'll likely get worse, because you're going to stir some stuff up if you try to address it, but I think it's, it's your duty to address it, you can't just say we have a problem and move on. You signed up for this job, it's a tough job, this is going to be a tough issue, but I hope you address it, and I hope you rise to the challenge of addressing it, thank you for your time.
Kitty Osborne, one oh seven one Dorset Road. You guys are smart people, and I'm sorry, again, some of the things that were said tonight, so for the sake of Powhatan, the things that I have identified, it appears as though you all are working in silos, you're not communicating, I don't understand, in leadership one oh one, leadership one oh one, communication and organization elicits cooperation, and I don't understand how some people can get an email, but then everybody doesn't get the email, y'all are a team, and for the sake of Powhatan, y'all need to be a real smart team, because I know there's a lot of smart people up here on the stage. I am very concerned, though, how one person can hire someone for the county, and we don't even have an accurate application, I'm very concerned about that, so thank you, I, I, again, I don't recall everything that was said, but that's very concerning to someone who pays administrator, in my almost forty years in government service, I hired hundreds of people, I fired people, but I had other folks making sure applications were accurate and honest, and if anything dishonest was on an application, it got thrown out and never even came to me. So, communication, organization elicits cooperation, and then that's going to elicit trust, y'all didn't read the book I gave you, but anyway, y'all are smart people, okay, and we have faith in you because we elected you, but I'll be praying for all of you, okay, y'all are smart people, thank you.
Chris Smith, sixty-one hundred Anderson Highway. Mr. Chairman, board members, we've all met before, like the gentleman that was here before, I came here to listen about something else, and we got into this discussion, it was about taxes, it was about tax assessment, but I heard things here tonight that did disturb me, and I know this board, I know it's a little divisive every now and then, and I know you'll come to the root of it, but I can't leave this room without calling out the fact that I heard things that I didn't like, that we had an application that wasn't complete, that we've hired someone that we're being told doesn't have the qualfa, qualifications to do a job, I don't know if these things are true, but I do know that the group of you are here to make sure that's happening, so I would hope that you will, and I know that you will, but I can't leave this room without knowing that, I hope you do look into this, because if that is true, I hope it never happens again. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Schmitt?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chair.
All right, we'll close the public comment period, county attorney comments?
No, no comments, Mr. Chair.
County administrator comments? Yes, sir, I do like to, I'd like to apologize to all of our employees for what they witnessed tonight, I hope, I know we can do better, but tonight was an embarrassment. All right, board comments?
I have one. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I have one, can, can you come up, Brett, and help me on this, I got a question on contractor storage yards, I got two companies, two businesses are looking to come to my district, and I'm gonna make a motion, before I make a motion, let Brett explain it a little bit better.
Yeah, I think I can quickly summarize the issue, and some interested prospects we have in District Two raised the issue, but I think they're a county issue, not a District Two issue. First, we would classify as a contractor's storage yard, you may recall, I think two years ago, we did kind of a cleanup of the zoning ordinance, we looked at a bunch of terms we had in there that we didn't define, one of them we used in the ordinance was contractor's storage yard with no definition, so we defined that use, we didn't go the next step and actually identify which zoning districts it should be permitted in and how, that's a use that we, you know, we see more and more of, I think, so it would be appropriate to take the next step and actually say where it should be allowed, you know, by right and heavy industrial, maybe conditionally used permit in other districts, so that's one, and then the second one is somebody's interested in doing something that we classify as a brush and stump recycling business, where they would like grind up stumps. Previously, that was in the ordinance, that's how yard works was permitted, but in twenty fourteen, as you recall, we had outside consultant came in and did a big rewrite of the zoning ordinance, didn't do a great job, and the use was taken out at that time, I don't think on purpose, I think it was just because we had kind of an off-the-shelf ordinance put on us, so would recommend we look at putting that back into the ordinance, something that was there historically, so, that's.
Thank you, Brett. So I wanted to send it down to planning commission for review.
Excuse me?
I want, I want to send it to the planning commission for, let them look at it, give us their recommendations.
You guys got any problems with doing that?
Not, not if you lift that gamble.
You just send it down, we'll, 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 we don't need a motion.
It's technically by state code to send.
Send it to the commission, okay, all right.
All right, I move to request staff and planning commission to develop an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would add contractor's storage yards to the list of uses and appropriate use standards, with a recommendation sent to the board by, was our next meeting, May?
No.
June?
May twenty-third, you want to go to June?
No, yeah, they send it to. No, yeah, they send it to the planning commission. Planning commission does what they're going to do.
And stump and. Brush and stump recycling. Didn't hear that one in there.
And brush and stump recycling, yes.
Okay, does he have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Go send it down to the planning commission, take care of this, Sean. Anyone, any other supervisors have comments? Right.